We got one minute.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, please take a seat. Everyone online, thank you for attending tonight. See him. So, Mr. Marler, on your last council meeting, would you like to lead us in the pledge? All righty then. First up is the agenda approval. Under Mr. Morgan's item seven tonight, we'll add Marler Street parking lot. Any other changes? Go ahead, Mr. Braden.
Thank you, Mayor. Can we move mine? I guess it would be under my comment for the Fire Department. Can we move that up as high as we can on the agenda? These guys don't have to sit here all night.
Do you have a recommendation? Say after 2A?
Perfect.
So that'll be 2B. And that way, we can have that discussion before public comment. Okay? All right?
Thank you.
So we have those two changes. Mr., anyone else? Where's Skip on, Mr. Overdeer?
I'm already here.
He's not there.
Ah, okay. I didn't get to see you. I saw Mr. Menchell there down in the corner. So, all right, so seeing no further changes, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
All right. Any opposed? Seeing none, so moved. All right, first up, 1A, approval of minutes October 19, 2020. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion, Mayor. Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. I'm gonna do this little trick. Any opposed? Seeing none, so moved. Item 1B, approval of minutes October 19, 2020, council executive session.
Again, I'll make that motion, Mayor. Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Is there any opposed? Seeing none.
Mayor, I just have a question.
Go ahead.
Are we supposed to actually be voting on these?
Usually, we have in the past, haven't we?
Yeah, I just...
I don't know if we actually have to vote on them.
Gary, you probably do need to say all in favor, I, all opposed, no.
Well, that's why I said any opposition, because if there was some, then I'd take a roll call vote.
Well, yeah, but just do all those in favor and then have everyone say aye for all that are in favor.
All those in favor? So moved. Hey, that's what we pay in the big bucks for. So I listen to the attorney. All right, thank you, Mr. Bowman. Up next, proclamation recognition, special presentations today. Under 2A, we have the presentation of the Crosstown Connector approach and timeline. And who's gonna do that, Lance?
Mr. Zinguzzi, you want to do the introduction?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Back in June, we came before you and presented a proposed redesign of the Crosstown Connector. At the conclusion of that discussion, you directed us to move forward with the redesign. Following that directive, we have since re-engaged Atkins Engineering to undertake that work. We have now executed the initial phase of notice to proceed with them. And I have asked the project engineer, timing, and also the milestones of the project as it progresses. And then we'll take any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Take it away.
Jessica, if you see the microphone button in the top right-hand corner of your screen, if you'll click that, it'll turn green. As of now, we cannot hear you, but we do need you to click that button for us.
Okay. Can you guys hear me?
Loud and clear.
Okay. Can you see? Can you see the PowerPoint now?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, good deal. All right. Good evening, everyone. As Louis said, my name is Jessica Galema. I'm with Atkins. I'm going to be the project manager for the Destin-Crosstown Connector redesign. Sorry I can't be with you tonight in person. We had a little bit of a COVID scare, so I'm just going to do my best virtually here. But if there's any kind of a technical glitch, let me know. There we go. For anyone who's unfamiliar, this project is the new roadway extending from Benning Drive to Beach Drive. And this road was studied several years ago, as was previously mentioned, and designed to be an ultimate four-lane facility. Since that time, the decision was made to design only a two-lane road, which will result in a more narrow right-of-way and smaller stormwater ponds. Once this connection between Azalea Drive and Legion Drive is made, there will be a continuous alternative to US 98 from Stallman Avenue to State Road 293. Here you see an example of a typical section that complies with the Land Development Code. We'll be using this as a starting point for the new design. Tweaks will be made where necessary to reduce right-of-way acquisitions where possible or to better accommodate landscaping in places where right-of-way is more plentiful, such as through the old campground that's currently owned by the city of Destin. And just to reiterate, we're only looking at a two-lane roadway. This is another look at the proposed alignment that also shows the proposed pond locations from the previous study. Finally, I'd like to give an overall picture of where we are, where we're going, and how long it might take to get there. Right now, we're just kicking... Design plans will be submitted at 30%, 60%, 90%, and 100% completion. After the 30%, 60%, the design, and take feedback from citizens. Right-of-way acquisition is anticipated to begin as early as this spring and last through the beginning of 2023. Acquisition is partially funded through DOT Trip Grant, which reimburses the city at 50% for all acquisition costs. Construction is currently slated to be funded through the Tourist Development Council, but we'll be researching additional grant opportunities for this as well. And considering we haven't really started yet, that's what I've got for you, unless you've got questions.
Any council members have questions for our presenter? No questions? Good job. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
All right. And we just moved that item for Mr. Braden under 2B. Discussion, I believe, to read it correctly. Request for mutual decision from City Council and Fire District to terminate consideration of the Fire District lease at Clement Taylor Park based on public input received. Mr. Braden, would you like to lead us off here?
Yeah, that's pretty much it in a nutshell, Mayor. Unless anybody in the Fire Department would like to say anything about it. Yeah, that's my understanding. And I really want to get the blessing of the rest of the council that the Fire Department, Fire District, and the City Council just terminate all considerations for any piece parcel of Clement Taylor Park. And let's all move forward and try to get us the Fire Department on that end of town that everybody be happy with.
Do you want to make a motion to that effect? And then we'll discuss, have any further discussion than a vote?
Let's do that.
Okay, go ahead.
That'd be a formal motion.
So as I read it, that's pretty much your motion?
Yes, sir.
As it's written?
I'll second.
Chief, would you like to?
We can call him up during the discussion portion of it. So we have a motion. I'll read it. We have a motion for a mutual decision from City Council and Fire District to terminate consideration of the Fire District lease at Clement E. Taylor Park.
You good?
Good.
Steve Stone.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Menchell.
Chief, I have a few questions, if you would.
No one...
Done this once or twice.
You don't want to hide that pretty face anyways.
I don't know about that.
Knowing how important a fire station is on that end, everybody in the city, and obviously you're abandoning this, can you, for the benefit of the public, tell us what your future plans are in order to get a station on that side of town?
As far as plans right now, this was the plan, is what we've been working on. We're gonna continue to move forward.
Only talked to Lockwood Barnett about the property by the water tower. And he basically said if you all would go to him with the design plan, he still possibly could work something out with you. So again, for your information, that's a piece of property that might be available.
Okay.
That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Any other...
Mr. Mayor?
Questions? Go ahead.
Chief, so is my understanding this, that then you've listened to the public input, and because of the way the public feels, you've decided not to build that station down there?
I think, I thought it was mutual decision, as ways it kind of explained to me, mutual decision with the city and us, based upon the public's input. We understand and saw the outcry from the ones that have shown up at this meeting, but we also have a difference of opinion with that. However, we're understanding and willing to accept the City Council's decision.
Okay, thank you.
Well, just to clarify, you guys have an application pending. I'm behind you.
I'm sorry.
So we just need you to make it clear for the record that you are good with your part, which is withdrawing, because what Councilmember Braden is asking is for the City Council to vote on a mutual decision. They haven't made a decision yet. They need you to ask for it, and then they'll mutually agree to it.
Again, it's a mutual decision. Yes, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chiefs.
Yes, sir.
Sorry to put you on the hot spot.
That's not a problem. Wasn't expecting, but that's okay.
All right.
Chief, got one more.
Go ahead. Do I? Okay.
Just the city and this council is still behind you guys 100%.
That's my understanding, absolutely.
Please let us know, you know, keep us informed, you know, keep us in the loop so we can... Yes, I would like to say that we've always been really good partners with the city. The city's always worked real well with us. And we've always tried to help the city in any way, in any capacity we could. I know the city understands that we've explained, and as eloquent as we can, our desire and need, and it's not necessarily ours as much as it is as citizens and our visitors, it's their need, it's their response times, it's their emergency that we're responding to. So we know the need exists. We're gonna continue to press forward to place that station down there and in an effort to reduce our response times and be there when our citizens need us. So we'll definitely keep you informed. If you come up with something that you can use, you know, land of the cities, that's, you know, part-time or something, until you get something, you know, in concrete, I mean, I know this council is willing to work with you any way we can. Well, I appreciate that. You know, there very well could be other issues that come before this council where we're gonna need your support. And it might not necessarily be a land acquisition or a station build. There could be some other things that I won't go into right now, but I anticipate it's coming forward in the future, where you might have me appearing before this council again, asking for your support.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Is there any further discussion amongst council members? We have a motion and a second before us. And we've had our declaration from the chief that it's a mutual decision. So seeing no further comments, I'm gonna go ahead and take the roll call. We'll start with the unknown invisible man down there, Mr. Overdeer. Mr. Overdeer, yes? Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Destin?
Yes.
Mr. Marler?
Yes.
Yes.
Dr. Ramswell? Mr. Braden?
Yes.
And Mr. Menchell on the far end?
Yes. And Mayor, just for information, since we're all here, we could probably use the voting and save you a lot of roll calls.
That would, that'd be really nice. That would facilitate time. So I forgot we even had that technology here. It's been so long we've been under the COVID regulations. So yes, we shall use the electronic facilities given to us. By the way, that was a unanimous vote, so moved. All right. Next up, public comment. And this is on agenda items that are not public hearings. And we do have a few public hearings. And on those public hearings, you'll have an opportunity to speak. This is for public comments, for things that are on the agenda but not public hearings, or just anything that you want to talk about that is an issue in your particular life at this time that you would like to address the City Council. You'll have three minutes. I will start from my left, work to the right, then I will look at James and see if he's got anybody queued up over there, or any emails or text messages for Ray, and then we'll end the public comment. So at this moment, we will open up the public comment. Marcy, I see you standing and pacing. Go ahead. Oh, you're so nice. It's okay to be first. Ricky Bobby said if you're not first, you're last. Go ahead. State your name.
Daniella Piper, 608 Main Street. I'll be brief. I live right on Main Street, and the park on Main Street and also the park on Matty Kelly has become overgrown with bamboo, which is not a native plant. It's actually, I contacted the Florida State University Extension Service, and it's a pestilent plant here. And I'm just wondering if there's something that we can do to mitigate it, remove it, have it cut down? I don't know. But it's, in the four years I've lived in the house I'm in, it's taken over that area. We've noticed an increase in rodents and pests. You can't, like, you can't walk down that bridge anymore without there just being clouds of gnats, and it's icky. And you can't see the water from Matty Kelly anymore either when you walk down there. It's all, it's just shrouded in bamboo. It's grown up really quickly. So anyway, but thank you.
Sounds like a good item for Parks and Rec to take a look at, maybe?
Yep. Sure does. Either that, or we'll get all the elementary kids to come over there, cut it down so they can sword fight. That's what we did with the bamboo. We used to beat each other with it. But would you like to come up, ma'am? Marcy?
Marcy Bell, 3 Gulf Breeze Court. Nice to have you back, Mayor. Seeing as you were fishing. Two things. First thing is, I want to follow up to the discussion that was just had about the Fire Department at the park. One of my concerns is, especially when the chief said what he said, was that they might come back and ask for docks still at that park. I want to remind everyone in this room that in order for them to have a dock out there, it would take a portion of your submerged land lease, and you have to have some type of upland ownership. That's been discussed here in great length in reference to the park on the harbor with the Destin fishing fleet and that situation with that submerged land lease. So I just wanted to remind everyone in the room and the public that in order for that to happen, they have to have an upland interest. So please let's stay away from even a lease of one inch of that park. And then the second thing is, came out in the news, is the COVID trailer that was operating across the street from AJ's? Is everyone in the room aware of that? So my concern is for the public, the citizens of Destin and the tourists that may have used that, the situation where they may have been told that they were not positive when they were positive, other situations, social security numbers and et cetera that were exposed during that. My question is, and I don't know if anybody has the answer, is did they receive permitting or licensing through the city to operate that mobile unit there? Just for the record, just asking for the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcy.
Did you want me to answer that, Mayor?
Sure.
They did not receive any permitting or licensing from the city. In fact, it was the subject of a code enforcement matter.
So code enforcement was made aware of it, took action, and...
Yes.
So they got away with it for a little while before they got caught?
I wouldn't want to phrase it that way. But technically, yes.
Apparently they did.
It was in process.
Yeah. Yeah, it's just hard. It's always hard to keep up with folks that want to fraud people. Is anyone over in that part of the room? Want to come up to podium, public comment? Seeing none, I'll look towards the middle of the room. Anyone want to speak, open public comment? Anyone back there in the back? Nope, that's all staff. At this time, do we have anybody online?
No, sir.
Ray, do you have any texts or emails?
No, sir.
Seeing no more further comment at this particular time, I want to remind the public that there'll be opportunity for public comment at the very end of the meeting for anything that has taken place here tonight, or if you just forgot and just remembered while you're sitting here watching the council meeting. So I'm gonna close this portion of the public here, or the public meeting.
Which takes us?
Which takes us now to the city manager report. So take it away, Lance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 4A is regarding an update on the Main Street-Kelly intersection. Staff, right after our last meeting, went ahead and installed three new pedestrian crossing ahead signs in that area leading up to that crosswalk. Staff also ordered new signage for that crosswalk that is lit, LED yellow flashing light. It's a solar unit, actually multiple solar units, that we received and will be installed tomorrow. And then Mr. Zinguzzi has been working with Dewberry to initiate warrant study, an expedited warrant study. And he's also working on some other avenues that we could pursue if we need to, to get that intersection taken care of. Both Mr. Burgess and Mr. Zinguzzi are here if you have additional questions about it.
Yeah. Unfortunately, I wasn't here at the last meeting. Right now, we're putting the signs up and the lights up to mitigate any further tragedies, but is that all part of that traffic study?
Absolutely. The warrant study, we'll definitely look at making that a three-way stop. And Mr. Zinguzzi, like I said, is looking at some other avenues that we could pursue if we need to. Our representative from Oaklus Sheriff's Department last week endorsed a three-way stop also, so...
I live over there, so I endorse it as well. Go ahead.
Item 4B is code compliance, end of the fiscal year review snapshot with Mr. Joey Forgione doing the honors for us.
And Joey, at the end of your presentation, we'll make an opportunity for council members to ask you any questions. Go ahead.
Ten-four, sir. So Mayor and council, I want to thank you for the past two years of support. We've come a long way, and you guys should be proud, and I'm proud of them. Some of the things that we put in place was your SOPs, general orders, and we're still fine-tuning those. Your vehicles are marked in uniforms. Remember when I first came back, I said to you, if they look professional, they'll feel professional. It's really assisted not only code and the citizens, but it's assisted your sheriff's office. It helps them in their response times. We handle the codes, they handle the law, they can handle the more serious things. And if we work like that, it's almost like a force multiplier. Your code officers, you know, they work seven days a week, Monday through Thursdays from 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. Saturdays, Friday, Saturday, and Sundays from 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. or 3:00 a.m., whichever I feel that I need to, awards, three of which in the past two years were lifesaving awards. So you should be proud of them, guys. So a snapshot for your fiscal year. Your total activities are approximately 13,000 activities within all their cases and everything they did. I really pushed them to track everything we possibly could. 748, there's 1,544 registrations with 4,204 cases. Your case type breakdowns, your parking's 1,892, towed vehicles six, your miscellaneous 1,306. That's your security checks and just your day-to-day operations, some of the smaller things, signs and things like that. Next slide, please. And this is your breakdown for your registrations. There was 1,544 registrations. But when you add all of it in there, you know, each of your livery vessels, you know, your locations, because we registered by locations for your beach vendors, your vehicles, it comes out to 2,045 items that we registered. Next slide, please. NOVs, your notice of violations were 203, notice of hearings were 63, and only one order to impose fines and liens. And then we hit COVID. Codes citations, 289 citations, 157 were monetary, 132 were your warnings. Parking violations was 1,892. Parking warnings was 780. There was 171 actual monetary citations. Your pay-to-park, these guys wrote, 941 citations in your pay-to-park. Your sheriff's office, I gave you a little snapshot for the year. They've done 903 calls for service for your parking violations and your noise violations was 600. Citations was 22 monetary and 18 warnings. There's a lot of verbals in there as well. Beach compliance was 438 totals. A lot of it was glass on the beach, some animals. There were some blocking emergency accesses and so on and so forth. Enforcement on your harbor, there was 1,768 activities. 1,182 were your idle speed zone warnings. BTRs were 47. There was 525 inspections. You had 10 transient boat slip violations, and there was about 197 miscellaneous. Total of 134 citations. 26 were monitaries, 108 were warnings. There's approximately 18,924 vessels in Oaklus County that are registered. Out of that, we have, the jet skis are 274, the pontoons are 247, and there was 20 livery vessel businesses. Your rental registrations total are 1,480. 278 are long terms, 1,202 are your short terms. STR total activities are 3126. 1,202 is your registration, sign inspections 975, 506 parking violations, 32 noise, trash was 233, and your noise, notice of violations were 154. Which leads me to COVID shutdown. During your COVID shutdown, this is pretty much what code did. We stepped up, and when we had the orders, we went ahead and assisted in shut down the beaches and maintained social distancing and education. The total activities between this timeframe was 5,271. We registered 655 STRs, 120 LTRs, 13 livery registrations, one beach vendor, total of 394 code cases. We accounted for 3,642 persons that were removed and educated from their beaches. There was 446 vessels removed and educated from the beach down at Noriega Point. And that pretty much sums everything up for the past year.
All right, thank you so much, Joey. I'm sure there might be some questions here. Does any of the council members have any question for him? Mr. Braden?
Thanks, Joey. Y'all gonna try to step it up this year a little bit?
We got some things planned.
Yeah. That's incredible. Seems like, I don't know, three, four years ago, we may have had, I don't know, maybe 50 citations written all year long. So it sounds like y'all doing what the council's asking, and we've been asking what the public's asked to do. So thanks a lot, and a great job.
Ten-four, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Braden. Mr. Marler?
Joey, on the idle speeds, is there a breakdown of whether they were wave runners or pontoon boats or other...
No, but that's a good point that we can go into next year. Dave can probably give you an estimate. I think there was more of the jet skis that I remember asking him, but I don't know an actual number.
Okay.
And just to bring that to light, for every one of those warnings he issued, five people went by him just as fast that he couldn't stop and talk to. It's just the never-ending story. Ms. Ramswell? Dr. Ramswell, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. No worries. You know, what strikes me is, in addition to what Rodney pointed out, is...
is I believe several years ago when we first started cracking down on the non-registration of short-term rental, you, everybody has been doing to really get those under control. So thank you.
Joey's paying his way. Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Mayor. And before we move on after this, I had something on A, but I couldn't get your attention, so I need to go back to that, please. First of all, like the other previous council members before me, y'all did a fantastic job. Congratulations on that. Joey, a couple of questions. On the sheriff's office totals and also on your STR totals, well, actually, first of all, the sheriff's office, do we have any idea on the noise complaints? How many of those are short-term rental versus residence?
I could sit down, I had a spreadsheet sent to me. I could sit down and we could put it in the system and see if we could get that number.
It was just something we were trying to measure way back when about how many complaints we get out of short-term rentals. That was my question. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Great job.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Thank you, Joey. Keep up the good work. Lance?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 4C is a brief update from Ms. Karen Jankowski regarding the complaint policy status. Karen is online with us tonight.
Go ahead, Karen.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor. I appreciate your time. As early as a week ago Monday, I received some updates from Legal on some corrections to the current policy based on the market of research that we've done from other organizations, as well as creating a separate policy for additional areas that we need to cover. So I have reached out to organizations throughout the state to help me create that secondary policy. So I will be meeting with the council this week, hopefully to have them look at those and give me some advice on which one may be the best to move forward with. And so that is the status I have for you. I was hoping to have a final draft as soon as possible, but with COVID and hurricanes, and I hate to throw excuses up there, but it's been very difficult to keep up with the multiple projects. So I appreciate your patience on this project.
Thank you. Does any council members have any questions or comments? Go ahead, Mr. Mitchell.
Ma'am, you mentioned a second, you're working on a second policy. What is that on specifically?
Specifically, it will address the whistleblower.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Anyone have any other questions or comments to Karen? Seeing none, Karen, thank you very much for the update.
Thank you.
Mayor, go ahead, Lance.
4D is regarding the findings of the geotechnical investigation that was directed by council, and that, so we're not talking in code, was when we had a presentation regarding Stallman Intersection, and we had talked about a possible pedestrian overpass, and we wanted to know about an underpass. And there was discussion about the water table being too high at that point, so we asked if they would do some through the road. So at council's discretion, we can move to the next stage if you want to, and I'd like to do that.
Okay, I think this council's very interested in any alternatives. An under, an underpass is a lot more aesthetically pleasing. We're going to spend all this money on the ground Highway 98, and it'd be tough to kind of put a big old giant tower over the road, kind of defeat the purpose. Ms. Ramswell, I see that you have a comment. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just find it really interesting because that was one of the things we had been very much interested in doing, and then to get that report back that essentially said it was a no-go and information would be, did they give any indication of why the numbers are so drastically different after we asked about it specifically?
Michael, would you like to answer that?
I will do that. It'd be my pleasure, sir. Volkerd Engineering didn't do any borings or augering initially as part of their assessment. They relied on some information they collected from other engineering firms. I know James' head's in the way, but, I'm trying to talk to her. But the, the information that they received preliminarily said that it was only like six feet below the existing grade. And I think a few of the councilors called that into question.
Yeah, I believe our attorney here to my right, Mr. Destin, brought that issue up. So now he's got a new skill set of geographic experts. So thank you, Mr. Destin, for calling them to question.
Well, it's, I mean, we've lived here long enough. I know that Rodney and I, you can, you know where the water line is, and you know how tall that bluff is. And yeah, they maybe just got some bad information, and now that we got out there, we're back on track. So let's pursue this one.
All right.
If I could just finish for just a second. Their findings was that the water table, or were, that the water table was lower than 14 feet below grade, which does qualify for exploration for a tunnel.
All right, Mr. Mitchell, I'll get to you, and then I might entertain a motion here. We'll press on. Go ahead, Mr. Mitchell.
Mayor, Dr. Ramswell covered the issue I was talking about. I was questioning the issue on Volkerd, but that was addressed. Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, I'll make it. I move that the city manager be authorized to execute a task order with Volkerd Engineering as described in the attached scope of work for the conceptual design of a pedestrian tunnel under US 98 in an amount not to exceed $4,500.
I have a motion. And I have a second. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Seeing none, we have our little technology. Let's go ahead and cast a vote. Well, we're confirming that you're confirming. Ah, there we go. Eyes have it, vote is unanimous, so moved. Mr. Manager?
Thank you. A few announcements. Staff wanted to express our appreciation for council's support of the celebration of life for Colton that was held at Dalton Threadgill. We appreciate council waiving off fees and allowing that to happen in our community. Likewise, coming up on November the 7th, there will be, at Morgan Sports Center, a turn held there with all the proceeds benefiting the family, too. And likewise, I appreciate council's support of that, too, waiving off any fees that may have been involved normally for that. Secondly, on the week of Thanksgiving, I'm going to head up north to Missouri, Illinois to help my family take care of a few things. But we'll be in good shape with folks here. And I believe that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Mr. Mitchell.
I wanted to go back, like I said, I had questions on number A under the city manager's report.
On A?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Okay, a couple of questions. I realize, I understand what we've put up so far. But my first question, is there any reason why we didn't temporarily put up stop signs? Anybody?
We may be able to do that, and I think that is staff's goal, is to make that a three-way stop. There are procedures for getting the public used to stop signs there, and we did want to try and get the warrant study behind us on this because it makes it so much easier for us to do it, and it also takes liability off the city for making that a three-way stop. Mr. Zenguzi may want to add to that.
Okay, and then the other thing is, I understand you put up the temporary sign showing crosswalk. If you look at all the crosswalk signs on Airport Road that have the same sign alerting drivers that there's a crosswalk coming up, at the crosswalk itself, there's a big sign with an arrow pointing to the crosswalk. If we were going to put up those crosswalk signs, I would ask that we still put up those arrow signs as well, alerting the drivers that that is the crosswalk. We have those on every other location. We should have put them up at that location as well.
So those, we have new signs that will accomplish that, that will be installed tomorrow. They're lit LED, with the LED lights you can see in the overhead.
And the arrow.
Fantastic, okay, very good, thank you.
On that drawing, is that a cross button for the pedestrian to press?
It is.
Okay, thanks.
How, what is the status of the traffic study? Because I know that...
It's in, it's in progress right now. We should have it within the next couple of weeks.
Okay, because I thought it was said that they could have it back as quickly as two weeks, but that may have been a member of the public that said that, not staff. So just, yeah, as long as we're really moving on that, that's terrific. Thank you.
Yeah, and while we're waiting on that study, I think the signage, and all attempts, they've also put one of those radar, the sheriff's department. So I think we've done everything we can do until we get that study back and make a hard decision on the permanent fix.
I would still like to have the temporary stop signs up, but this is a good beginning.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Ms. Marler.
I did have one concern on that. Drivers, I don't know about how we do this as far as the sight, sight thing, but apparently, like if you're coming off of Kelly to turn onto Main, either left or right, one of the major problems that I have seen is that the vehicles actually drive over the crosswalk to get as close as they can because it's even difficult to turn if you're coming down Main Street, going toward Kelly, trying to turn onto Kelly because people are edged out there in the crosswalk. I don't know if we can do anything about that. That would be the sheriff's department or some education because, you know, the crosswalk's there for that purpose. And I have actually seen people pull over the crosswalk, and then people have to walk around them because they're ignoring the rule about the striped line where they're supposed to be. But there is a sight problem. I can see there's, there is a sight problem there coming from both directions, so we might at least look at, trying to correct that also.
Yeah, just in some cases, you can't fix every scenario. You just have to trust people, use good judgment, and be good drivers. Well, in the interim, we'll provide every aspect of safety that we can as a city in hope that people...
We made an offer to an engineer who has accepted, and we will have an engineer professional on staff within the next 10 days. So we're looking forward to that, taking some of the workload off of the rest of the staff. So that's a huge, huge step.
And while we're in the announcement part of it, Mr. City Manager, I would like to remind the public and all of us that we just got a contract to buy our very first piece of public beach access thanks to Web Warren and our city manager and the staff that have worked tirelessly to help, along with the Florida Land Trust, to make that happen. It's our first purchase. We still have seven properties on our matrix to buy if we can get the funding. So I just wanted to highlight that under the announcement thing. It's just, it's a spectacular day in the history of the city of Destin. We have some really great parks on the bay, and now we're going to start establishing some really nice parks on the Gulf of Mexico, which is huge for the city of Destin. So I just want to applaud our staff and Florida Land Trust and the sellers of the property that we finally got our first one, and I really look forward to more in the future.
That'd be a great place for a Christmas party.
Now you're talking.
In that house on the beach.
There you go, there you go. Before we put a bulldozer to it.
Do appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. And the staff absolutely appreciates the council's continued support on that. It's kind of unheard of, what we're doing, and this is the first step of many, I know, but it's a huge step that we are bringing back a view corridor and bringing back public beach. Not just beach access, not a trail, but a real beach for the people to go sit and enjoy with their family. So that's huge.
Yeah, and this first property is kind of, to me, is like the, you know, we took the snowball, we just kicked it over the edge. So now it's just going to build momentum and get bigger and bigger and bigger. And hopefully, we can get one of those bigger pieces of property and really establish a beautiful public park.
Absolutely.
That's, that's our goal.
It wouldn't be fair to fail to mention our city attorney and our land use attorney, who also played a big role in getting this property lined up.
Yeah, everybody needs to pat themselves on the back. Council, attorneys, staff, it's okay. We did a good job here, and we're not done.
And Gary, I just wanted to also let you know that the second closing is scheduled for mid-November, so we will be purchasing our second piece of property there adjacent to the one we just purchased very shortly.
To steal a phrase, booyah.
5A, this is the second reading of ordinance number 2030 CC, an ordinance of the city of Destin, Florida, amending Article 13 of the Code of Ordinances relating to livery vessels, amending Section 13-149 renewals and expiration of permit, providing for findings of fact, providing for incorporation into the Code of Ordinances, providing for conflicting provisions, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. And this is a public hearing.
And seeing how this is a public hearing, I'm going to open up the public comment portion of this. I know we have some business owners here that would like to speak to this ordinance, so...
Mayor, can I ask a question of our attorneys first?
Go ahead.
At the last meeting, we had a member of the public bring forth some concerns about the legality. Were you able to double-check on that?
Yes. So the opinion of the individual that spoke, to paraphrase, was that Section 327.62D, which deals with discrimination against personal watercraft and prohibits discrimination against personal watercraft, was violated and does not discriminate against jet skis. It treats all personal watercraft the same. So I disagree with that opinion that was stated, and I think our ordinance is perfectly legal.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ramswell. All right, well, if there's no further questions or comments, I'm going to go ahead and open up this portion. Anyone, we'll start over here at this. I see a hand raised, come on up. You've got three minutes, just state your name and your address and make your comments. And if any council member has any questions, they will ask them of you, ma'am. Hit your button, Sherri. There you go.
Sherri Andrews, 5 Calhoun Avenue. I'm here to discuss the section of the ordinance pertaining to the transfer or sale of our current medallions. I've been operating on the harbor for 11 years, and I'm not ready to sell. I cannot do anything with. I have other vendors out there that would like to purchase the medallions from me. It's not going to increase anything on the harbor.
We're on second reading tonight. Does it have anything to do with what she's talking about?
Well, no, the ordinance that we're dealing with right now changes the dates. You can register for your permit. It used to be January to March, so now we're giving the livery vessel owners more time and making it from November to March 1st, or the end of February.
And that's all that, that's all this ordinance that we're dealing with tonight talks about?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I thought I was missing something, but...
Okay, no, but...
Obviously, I must have been, too.
However, to the property owner, we can discuss her issue separately because I think there might be a misunderstanding there.
But they, we'd heard the same thing at the last meeting, that they couldn't sell, and this ordinance has nothing to do with any of that at all.
Correct.
So there's nothing we can do about that tonight.
No.
All this doing, just giving them more time to register their vessels?
That's correct. But it's okay, Sherri, you still have the opportunity to come up and share your thoughts. It's just, for anyone else in the room, this is supposed to be on this particular ordinance, and that's not part of that ordinance.
Okay, I believe there might have been a big misunderstanding amongst us.
No problem, ma'am, no problem. But your issue is something that we definitely got to discuss But your issue is something that we definitely got to discuss.
And it is something...
As we move forward during the moratorium part of it.
Okay, because it's the difference between me ordering 20 boats this year or ordering 12.
You got it.
And so it's something that I would like to see addressed
Okay.
very quickly, very soon, if we can, please. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, do I have anyone else? I saw another hand over there earlier. Anyone else want to come up and talk about this particular second reading of the ordinance? Seeing none, anybody in the middle of the room? Come on up. State your name, address, press the red button.
John Stevens, 4025 Indian Trail. There is a couple items I brought up from the last meeting that council was going to suggest to staff to potentially add to the second reading, and I was just curious, is that stuff going to be added or not? And if I need to go over those three items again, I can.
Ms. Cop, I wasn't here, so...
No, it's November 2nd today, and staff wanted to get this ordinance passed and not go back to first reading. So we just want to go ahead and give the livery vessel owners more time to apply. So we need it, because we're changing it to November 1st, we need it to pass tonight if you're going to pass it. So, but other issues are not being ignored. That's something staff is working on.
See, even if it says expires in 12 months, it expires March 1st, as opposed to the 12-month part in there.
I'm not sure I'm following you, but I think we should talk about it separate from this ordinance, because we're not going to go back to first reading on it. This is actually helpful, and I think I can answer your question separately.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, for all our livery vessel guys, this particular ordinance allows you more time to get your registrations in. That's all that this ordinance is going to do. All right, so is there, James, do you have anybody queued up?
No, sir.
No? Any comments?
No.
Ray? No? Is anyone that would like to chat? Come on up. You know the drill. Name, address, press the red button.
Mike Abidi, 530 Harbor Boulevard. I feel like deja vu, because I think we've gone over this several times. My issue, I don't have any issue with the extension of the application for the permit, okay? Here's my issue. The renewal process, it's not a problem with the application process, because that should be as thorough as the city can get. The renewal process is what's burdensome, onerous, and complicated. It's, I realize staff is saying, let's give two more months. You could give 10 more months. Know what I'm saying? I'll put my application in the first week of January last year. I didn't get my permits until late into March. I realized that once COVID got into it, it kind of took over. I should have had my permits within two weeks. It was a renewal, okay? And they're saying we downsized the renewal. Well, they did downsize the renewal some. Why cannot a renewal? I've been in business for 50 years, guys. I stated the same thing last year. I feel like deja vu here. I've been in business for 50 years. I've applied for liquor licenses in three different states. It takes about five minutes to write the check and send it off with the renewal every year. Business tax receipts that the city's been doing, it takes about five minutes to write a check, take it in an envelope, and send it to the city. This is the most complicated, burdensome process to renew that I've ever seen in 50 years in business. It's not only complicated for us, which I'm sure what it was meant to do when it was developed, was to make it as difficult for livery vessel businesses, the city. This ruling, this extension, is for the applications in timely, okay? So it's, the burden that you're providing with this is as burdensome to city staff as it is, as it is to us. So it's complicated, way more than it needs to be. A simple renewal, like the business tax receipt, would be the best way to overcome that. Gentlemen, with this whole process of livery licensing, and I realize that Ms. Cop made the decision that it's, that it's legal and all, there's a reason. Destin is the only city in the state of Florida, only governing body in this whole state of Florida, that has any type of livery vessel ordinances active at the present time. And the reason was, Ms. Matthews told me, was because it's illegal, and she deals with, in Tallahassee every day. Just wanted to share that with the city. Best thing, you know. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. We appreciate it. That's something for discussion, we'll look into later on. All right, do I have any other further comments on this portion of our public hearing, of our second reading of ordinance 20-30-CC? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing portion of it, and I will entertain a motion in a second and then for discussion. Don't jump out. Mr. Menchel?
I made the motion, and I have a couple of questions. I move to adopt ordinance 2030 CC.
I have a motion.
Second.
And I got a second. Now it's time for discussion, so we'll start with you, Mr. Menchel.
Yes, just something for the new councils that'll be coming on. It is something, I've gotten several phone calls from several of these vessel owners, and it is something to consider moving forward, this application as far as a renewal. Okay, I understand having a very extensive first-time application, but to have that complicated of a form for renewal, it certainly should be streamlined, and I would ask council, future councils to consider that and staff to consider that. Any information we need for them certainly needs to be asked for, but to have a long, drawn-out renewal process when they've gone through the extensive first process seems ridiculous, and we ought to try to streamline that. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Good points. And I'll just make one statement. I know we've had livery vessel workshops before. I'm kind of surprised, you know, I wasn't part of that, that this wasn't brought up at that point and addressed soon thereafter, so maybe that's something that we need to do now in the winter months, is to sort this all out, industry and with our staff and the council members, and maybe a workshop forum, and we could try to rectify some of these concerns, because it's the first time that I've heard them, and I've been here for two years. So, Web, I saw you raise your hand. You got any comments?
Mayor, I've consulted with the code enforcement folks. This issue was raised during our meetings with the livery folks, I believe in February. It will be addressed in the new phase of renewals and applications, and this, what you have tonight is a first step of loosening that process up. It will be a whole lot more smooth operation for those that are renewing as opposed to those that are first-time applications.
There's hope. We're moving in the right direction. That's good news. Thank you, Louis, for bringing us up to date. All right, I've got a motion, I got a second. Seeing no further, oh, go ahead, Ms. Marler.
All right.
I didn't see you, sorry.
That's okay. I want to make sure I'm getting my memory refreshed. One of the reasons we put this ordinance into effect was, I believe, two reasons. One, we have a congestion in the harbor that we were trying to get a handle on. Secondly, we had fly-by-nighters coming in, using other people's private docks, renting stuff out, and we had no way of finding out who was supposed to be there and who was not, because I know we had complaints of some people on Holiday Isle. We had complaints of various public docks where they were coming from Fort Walton and everything. At least, that's my understanding of the ordinance, the main reason. So that's why, I guess, the legalities of the ordinance and why I know that none of the other cities might not be doing it. And attorneys, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I thought that was the intent of why we did this, not, not to punish the livery, the renters, you know, the people renting the pontoon boats and jet skis, but to try to, safety-wise, and also to stop the fly-by-nighters and get the people that are actually here in Destin, so they could actually make their, make their living. Am I correct on that?
Yeah, and it's a hard, it's a hard message to receive. We've dealt with that in the fisheries before, that regulations may seem burdensome for the guys that have been doing it for a long time, but in many respects, it also levels the playing field, and if you play by the rules, you should be rewarded. And I think some of that does take place here, to Mr. Marler's comments about illegal operators and people coming in there undercutting the guys that are established and have invested in their property, invested in their, their business and their equipment. Sometimes, regulation actually is going to level the playing field and put you in a better profitable position than, than if it was just, Katie, bar the door. Besides that, I don't think our harbor and our community can stand much more when it comes to that activity in the harbor. As we've seen, it's all shifted, some of it shifted to Fort Walton Beach, and now they're having issues. So we've got great operators in our harbor, and we want to kind of keep it that way, so we can maintain a good, safe condition in the Destin waterways. So I know it's a hard pill to swallow sometimes, but that's just the reality of it long-term, is it will benefit you more than it harms you when everybody's got to play by the same set of rules. That's my two cents. Seeing we have a motion and we have a second, no further comments, we'll go ahead and take a vote. Let's go ahead. Vote is unanimous, so moved. Go ahead, sir.
Next, we have item 5B. This is the second reading of ordinance number 109.10, an ordinance of the city of Destin, Florida, amending, or providing for amendment of ordinance 109 as amended personnel rules and regulations. Providing for authority, providing for findings of fact, providing for amendment to Section 35.1, scheduling of vacation leave, providing for amendment to Section 35.3, carryover of annual leave, providing for conflicting provisions, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date, and this is a public hearing.
Seeing how this is a public hearing at this time, I'll open up for comments.
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I move to approve ordinance 109.10 on second reading.
Okay. Let me do my, let me do my public hearing portion, and then I'm going to turn right back to you for the motion. All right, so go ahead. Come on up, sir. State your name and your address.
I have one question. What's the term?
Name and address.
John Green.
Yeah, I know who you are.
3792 Indian Trail.
Thanks, John.
You're welcome. One question. How long is this intended to go? What's the term limit? Is it a year, two years, or imper perpetual, forever? I would suggest that we, you put an amendment, that you make it a limited time. Otherwise, you could accumulate years and years and years, which I know there's some companies in this town that have them, and people can take one year of leave at the end of their retirement, at $60,000 to $80,000. And that's a burden of causing you guys to hire additional people. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone else have any public comments? Seeing none, I will close, well, I forgot, James, you got anybody queued up?
No, sir.
Any emails or text messages, Ray? Okay, at this point, I will close the public comment period of this public hearing, and Dr. Ramswell.
Motion stands.
I have a motion.
Second.
And I have a second. Is there any further discussion amongst council members on this second reading of ordinance 109-10?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, sir.
I just wanted to clarify that point, because it's a good point, but I think it's a misunderstanding too. The only thing we're doing is, we cap the number of hours you can carry over at 240. It cannot go beyond 240. That's it. It stops there. If, if you have more than 240 and you don't use it, then you lose it, so.
Okay, well, I'm glad for the clarification to help with the point that was brought up. I know how people do that. I took term of leave, and I got out of the service. It was kind of nice. But anyways, so we have a motion, we have a second, and seeing no further discussion, we'll take it to a vote. Vote is unanimous, so moved. Sir?
Next, we have item 5C. This is the first reading of ordinance number 20-33-NC, an ordinance of the city of Destin, Florida, relating to livery vessels, providing for findings of fact, providing for a 12-month extension of ordinance 19-30-NC, temporary moratorium on livery vessel permits, directing staff to develop recommendations for regulation of livery vessels, providing for severability, providing for expiration of moratorium, and providing for an effective date, and this is a public hearing.
All right, and seeing how this is a public hearing, I am going to open up the public comment portion of the hearing, and I'll start at this end of the room, and if anybody would like to come up and speak about ordinance 20-33-CA and providing for a 12-month extension of our temporary moratorium on livery vessel permits. Go ahead, come on up. State your name, your address, and you have three minutes, and hit the red button.
My name is Maya Schilder. I have 45 Ferry Road, Fort Walton Beach, with Extreme H2O and Destin Parasailing. I'm going to be kind of brief. I'm here tonight just to try to figure out how it's back, this is on the agenda this week, other than the fact that it sunsets. Two weeks after we are all in this room, we discussed some really serious legal concerns with the ordinance. To continue the moratorium without addressing any of those concerns brought up at the last meeting is not only unfair, but it continues to penalize those of us in the industry for another year or more, depending on when the harbor capacity study is completed, if and when you guys get funding for it. The council continues to ask the hard-working business owners to put their lives and business growth on hold for what seems to be a never-ending wait-and-see approach to our futures. Once again, we are asking to be brought to the table, to hear our voice, have our voices heard, and to work with the city to preserve our businesses, our livelihoods, before another extension of the moratorium is voted on by the council. Last week, when I was here, or a week before last, when I was here, we brought up the fact that you can't transfer, you can't sell, you can't move. Yes, we are, because of the moratorium, nobody else can start a business, but we can't sell it, ours. We can't move ours. And you're asking us for another year to put our entire livelihoods on hold. And, and we just want to be brought to the table and have a discussion. We talked about a workshop when we were here last time. There's no been, in two weeks, no discussion of a workshop, and yet the moratorium is up for a vote today. I'm just asking for you guys to bring us in and communicate, and let us communicate with the city on, on some of these issues. Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
She has a good point. Didn't we say we would look into having a workshop about this issue?
Councilmember Ramswell, let me just clarify this ordinance, because some of that's actually not correct. This ordinance does not prevent existing businesses from selling or transferring. It prevents them from expanding to more vessels than they currently have. It prevents new businesses that don't currently exist from starting up. So if we have dealt with this before, and the community development director can speak to it, but if somebody has wanted to sell or transfer their business, they've been able to do that. I don't know if you want to add anything, Mr. Zenguzi?
No, I think that's a misconception, as far as transfer or selling existing businesses. It's not affected by this ordinance at all. If I might remind you, one of the issues that has been a major concern is the overpopulation of the vessels in the harbor. That's been expressed by both the Harbor Waterways Board as well as the Harbor CRA. And so this study, as a matter of fact, I had a meeting this afternoon with the Army Corps, we finalized the survey for it. We're looking at studying early next year, the study. The federal government has been slow releasing their resources to complement ours, but I think we're heading in the right direction right now. But that study is tremendously important to put both safety issues, as well as making sure that the industry competes in a much more effective manner.
Ms. Cops, for the public record, this ordinance doesn't prevent someone from selling their 12 pontoon boats to another person. It only prevents a person from going out and buying 12 pontoon boats and trying to run them in Destin Harbor.
Right, and you, if you sell your 12 pontoon boats, the new person cannot now have 13 or more pontoon boats. They can have 12 or less, just like you.
That's for the public record. Thank you.
No problem.
Does this also address Ms. Sherry's question?
I think it does. That's why I had suggested we talk about it later, if I understood her correctly.
Yes, that's why I said that, for the public record. Okay, so we have a motion. Mr. Breed?
Thank you, Mayor. We're talking about this ordinance, but is the city, is there any other ordinance with livery vessels that prohibits them from selling, trading, swapping, bartering, whatever their business?
No.
So somebody's spreading some bad rumors out there, because this is like the third or fourth time that we've had somebody come to the podium and say that we can't sell our business.
I'm shocked.
And when they've called us, and when they've called staff, we've told them that it's allowed.
There's nothing that says they can't sell or anything, and this, I mean, I know there's a moratorium, but that has nothing to do with me being able to sell my business to anybody else. I mean, I wish I knew where this was coming from, but anyway, thank you, Mayor.
I see your hand up, and normally I don't allow that, but come on up. Seeing how you brought it up, you might as well, tell us where you heard that information, if you could.
We sent your livery, the ordinance, to attorneys and got a legal opinion that said it was extraordinarily vague. I gave you guys the legal opinion when I was here, week four last, from Bexham Lane in Pensacola, land use attorneys, and they went over the entire thing and said that the transferability is extraordinarily vague and prohibits it outright in certain instances. Yes, and I gave that, I gave a copy to everybody last, when I was here last. So that's what, that's why we need clarification before you continue kicking it down the road. I just feel like, you know, this is the third extension? This is the third extension, I believe, of the moratorium, and, and it just feels like it just keeps getting kicked down the road.
I want to correct you there, we're not kicking it down the road. We've got a study with the Corps of Engineers that the city's going to help pay for to assess what the end product's going to be. So it's not kicking it down the road.
Have we received funding, though?
It's in our budget, or this, that's why we're waiting on the Corps, because it's It's in our budget. Or this, that's why we're waiting on the Corps, because it's a very expensive proposition, and the Corps is going to help facilitate that. That's what they do. So it's not a matter of kicking it down the road, and the speed of COVID pandemic times, things are taking time, so the ordinance has elapsed. So we're re-up, we're, we're reinstituting the moratorium until the accomplishment of the, of the moratorium. So I just want to go on the public record to let the public know, and you included, that we're not kicking the can down the road, that this is part of the process that we have to do. Because when you make these ordinances, you've got to mitigate, uh, uh, financial risk. You've already been to the attorneys, so that tells you that, and so in, in retrospect, our city is dotting the i's and crossing their t's as, as we go through this process, because we want to do good governance and, and have a product that's beneficial to our business community and to the safety and welfare of our community at the same time. So, so, and there's, like Rodney said, there's some misinformation being put out there. And, and so I just wanted to go on the public record to let you know that that's not what we're doing.
Well, at last, at the last meeting, it was, uh, one of the council members asked what the holdup was with the harbor capacity study. And I believe they were, that, that we were set, they were, they were told you were waiting on federal funding. And if we're waiting on federal funding in an election year during a global pandemic, I'm just concerned, we might be waiting for federal funding next year in, on, in November. Which, then it does, you know, then, then there'll be another moratorium, because the capacity study wouldn't be done by then. So we just keep seeing it as an extension, and, and we just, I will repeat, we just want to be brought to the table. I've been to one, there was one workshop that I attended. We brought up, the, the vendors brought up the concept of changing the application dates, because you guys, you know, you were applying in March. We were open in March. There was this crazy rush. We brought that to the table. We, we have good ideas. We know this business. And we're asking just to be brought to the table before more extensions are put on us. And, and to the point of, 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 I, I would like to hear back from the council or from, from the city attorney about the legal opinion and what our, our attorneys say. If they, if, if you feel that what they said is completely incorrect, great. But I'd like to see that in writing. I'd like to see it where we all know that, at the end of the day, if somebody wants to purchase our business, we have the ability to transfer our assets.
Ms. Cop, it isn't writing, is it not?
We have already told multiple business owners that they could do that. They've had, I think they've had sales where they've come in and the new company has been approved, as far as I know. But at the end of the day, the first step that I would recommend, the council advise the public, because I can't give legal advice to the public, but if I was y'all, I would tell the public, please check with staff first, because you might not need to go get another legal opinion. You could just call us and say, is this allowed under the ordinance? And we'll respond. If you don't like the response, or you don't agree with the response, you can call your attorney. But we might be beneficial as a first step.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. And just to the public in general, I just highly recommend, don't, don't get your information off of Facebook or social media. We, we have a professional hired staff here that can answer most of your questions. Uh, attorneys and professional land planners and, and community developers that, that could probably give you all the correct answers, even that some of the answers may not be the ones you really want. Go ahead, Ms. Rams, uh, Dr. Ramswell.
Ms. Cop, did you get a copy of this Beggs and Lane, um, legal opinion at the last council meeting?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure you've gotten it and been able to look at it.
Yes, but in our review of our ordinance, we determined that new businesses would, might be allowed to start.
Right, so your opinion differs from the opinion?
New vessels in the harbor pending the harbor scheme from you. Your rights to sell your business are not taken from you. You can transfer however. Whoever you sell to just simply cannot expand it during the moratorium period until the harbor study tells us what can really be safe in the harbor.
And you can downsize, and we won't mind at all.
You can always downsize, but.
There you go. All right, we have a motion, we have a second. I think we've had, um, all the, we've had public. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't close the public comment portion.
No, they're still public.
All right, we, we additional public comments. Hit the red button. There you go.
Greg Fisher, thirty-five Red Bay Court, San Rosa Beach. Peggy was here, Peggy Matthews was here last, uh, time, and she couldn't be here today, but she is listening. And regarding the, um, the ordinance being illegal, and our land attorney said that it, it, it doesn't, it doesn't, um, uh, break any laws. Peggy, I asked Peggy this actually prior, because I thought the same thing, and she, her response was PWCs should be treated as any other vessel, and she still believes it is, it is legal. And this is someone that has forty years' experience as, as a lobbyist for watersport and boat rental companies. She also, uh, mentioned, you know, city, there's no city or county in the state of Florida that has a moratorium or medallion system. So there's a lot to be said when Peggy says this, so I believe there's, there's more to it. Another thing I want to talk about is just, just tourism, because we're, we're, I just want to, this is my, um, profession. I own a travel agency. We book, you know, fifty to sixty thousand reservations a year for various activities. And, uh, just to get a quick thing here, so, you know, we know Destin's term is rapidly changing. Uh, boat and jet ski rental industry is a twenty-five million dollar industry. It is no longer a cottage industry like it once was, and it's quickly becoming the number one activity people do when they visit Destin. It is by professional estimate that watersports have already exceeded the recreational fishing industry in terms of revenue this year. In two thousand and fourteen, boat rentals made up four percent of total bookings on our website, Trip Shock. But in two thousand and twenty, they exceeded fifteen percent. It's a nearly four hundred percent increase in six years. On the contrary, fishing went from sixteen percent share to ten percent in two thousand and twenty, a nearly forty percent decrease. Not by any means trying to downplay the impact of our charter fishing industry, because they have a special place in our community. But if we supported the boat operators half as much as we did fishing, we could have real solutions. And what I'm talking about is safety. This is all about safety, it's moratorium, but I barely hear the word "safety" being mentioned. Like, we want to come and talk about safety and make it safer, but it seems like the solution is, let's just shut them down and then figure it out later. So let's talk about safety. Thank you.
Come on up, Mike.
Mike Abbott, E five thirty, Harbor Boulevard. One thing that wasn't addressed is, is if somebody, if I'm a landlord and I have somebody renting ten boats lip from me and they go out of business, I cannot bring in another tenant, because that would be a new business buying new boats, is how I understand it. Okay, let me just say, what makes this thing, what, what, what I get from Ms. Matthews, what makes this moratorium illegal is it targets jet skis and pontoon boats. If you had, which I asked a year ago, when y'all, a couple of years ago, when y'all did this, if you include every vessel in Destin Harbor, private and commercial, charter boats, fishing boats, include all of that in your moratorium. If you're doing a capacity study for the harbor, shouldn't it include every vessel in the harbor and that uses the harbor? No, you're targeting us. We know you're targeting us. We know what's happening. We see the writing on the wall. There's nothing any of you can say that is going to make any of the livery vessel operators believe that you're being fair with us. Okay, now, workshop. I highly suggest, before you, before you vote on this moratorium extension, God, I learned a word tonight, oxymoron. You're talking temporary moratorium, but we're going on three years? What's temporary about three years? You know, I guess for a tree, three years is pretty temporary, you know? But for a three-year-old, it's a lifetime. You know, so I mean, is it temporary, ordinance, moratorium? Going on three years, it might be five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten years before this is all over with. Okay, so we want a workshop? You're talking about making a workshop? When? You're going to do that in three years, or you're going to do that soon? I would suggest to the council, my recommendation is, you get a workshop within the next several weeks, and you do not vote on this extension at all for the moratorium. And that's the easiest vote you'll ever take, because as of right now, I think the sun has set on the moratorium a couple of days ago. So all you have to do is nothing, because the moratorium is not in force as we speak, to my knowledge. And if it's not, you don't have to do anything. Don't vote at all. And the moratorium will stay moot. You can always add the moratorium. Two weeks from now, four weeks from now, six months from now, you can go back to the moratorium. And the moratorium isn't going to prevent a harbor capacity study. You can cancel the moratorium, abolish it, and you can still do a capacity study next week, next month, whatever, whenever it comes. But I highly recommend we get a head workshop, and at the workshop, I highly invite, Mr. Mayor, every member of the council will come and sit in and listen and see what's discussed and get, be part of it, so that you, that you see the whole picture, instead of just what we're telling you, our staff's telling you. Because both of that's going to be prejudicial. So you come and learn for yourself what's going on. In addition to that, I'd just like to thank all the council members for their service, the one, the four that are leaving. Thank you for your service over the last four years. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Appreciate your comments.
Sir, I think you make some good points. I'm in line with that, I think.
Do you have questions I'm having answered?
Uh, well, I actually, I had a question. The situation he brought up about the tenant and maybe going out of business and not being able to sell, or have, wouldn't that be a situation of a, of a transfer and that would be acceptable? Or, um, am I wrong, too?
No, you're correct. Transfers and sales and tenants are all okay, as long as the business isn't expanded. But what Mr. Forgione was just bringing up to me was that perhaps the source of the confusion is that the certificate they received says on it that it's non-transferable. I don't know if that's causing confusion. It just means that the new, that the business you sell to needs to come in and get their own certificate, but they still can come in and get one. So I don't know if that's the cause of confusion that we're trying to figure out, but again, they can sell and transfer and lease.
And, and I got a question for you, Ms. Cop. Uh, so we let, the moratorium is essentially expired. So if we don't renew the moratorium, which means that there'll be no limit. Anyone could come in and, and every business owner here could apply for fifteen, twenty more boat permits. And you'd have to issue it because the moratorium's expired.
We'd have to issue it if they meet code. Yes. It is, it lapsed yesterday.
So that defeats the whole intent of the moratorium in the first place, uh, Mike. So, 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 as a. Well, I understand that, but, but a stop, a stopgap measure is the moratorium. Well, I don't know, I, I don't know if the council wants to do that. I'm just making that statement. If, about opening the door and letting it, I understand. I understand.
We can always, if, if this was to pass tonight, and let's say we schedule a workshop for, um, second meeting in November, then we've got the new council seated. We can discuss it further. And if we decided that we didn't like the moratorium after that workshop, we could always pull it.
Now, I got a real novel idea. We get done with the harbor capacity study, and we find out that the harbor can stand more. And then we can make a, a good legislative decision based on the results of the harbor capacity study. That's all that we're doing here with this moratorium, is waiting for the information that we need to make good judgments on how to legislate, uh, for the city.
But we don't know when that's going to be done, right?
Yep. That's why we're going to extend the moratorium.
Mayor, can I jump in here?
We're looking at early next year, uh, ma'am.
Say again?
I said, we're looking at early next year, and there will be workshops as part of that capacity study.
And I know it's hard to say, but when next year? Early? Like, January early, or early, like, summer?
Timing we talked about was around March of next year.
So, tonight, I've heard a lot of talk about shutdown. You guys are all legacy businesses. So you've been frozen in time. So we're not talking about shutting you down with the moratorium. You're talking about the inability to grow. Is that accurate? Otherwise, you're here advocating for your future competition, correct? Y- yes. Okay, so that was a nod. I got you. Guys, I, I know with this. So what is it? Well, if you got, well, let's have a discussion, though. I'm, I'm not scared of that, so come on up.
I'm Johnny with one seven two Harbor Boulevard, Tailfins, Watersports. Uh, it's not just the moratorium, it's that you're putting on us as the twenty operators that are doing it correctly, but putting extra rules and regulations on us. Like, are the workshop, for example, just one little thing didn't listen to in the workshop. Can we have a one-page renewal? Nothing happened on that whatsoever. It's been a year. It's just one frustrating part. We work seven days a week, eight months out of the year, and that's just one of our businesses that we do. And to have to deal with the renewal process that you put us through, this would be my seventh year. It's, it's a pain, a pain, a complete pain, and it's frustration. It's just one of the frustrations. Then when we started this out originally, I think our stickers were fifty bucks. You know, it was at, at first, hey, this is good for you. It's going to be fifty bucks, seventy-five, a hundred. And now it just accumulates. And we do feel like we're targeted, that, you know, this study supposedly is for the harbor. Well, if it's a study for the harbor, it's a study for all boat traffic, all boating. And that's why you're putting a moratorium on pontoons and jet skis isn't fair, isn't correct.
Well, it's because it's the largest growth area in the harbor, and the largest safety concern, and the most people getting killed and injured is on rental craft. So as part of maintaining the health, welfare, and safety of the harbor, you have to approach the, the, the issues respectively.
And we can appreciate that. We can appreciate that.
And not one single person in here, including yourself, has been diminished in your capability to be profitable. You've maintained the size of your fleet, and the only thing holding you back is how much you charge. The city has not reduced your capability to make money when it instituted its moratorium. So we're trying to work through the process, and I understand it's frustrating and slow, but as you know, because you have other businesses, that's just part of being a business owner, is, is dealing with it. My concern is, for me, and I'm going to be real honest, because, uh, it's, it's one of the things that's critical to me as a legacy charter fisherman, is I don't want that sign on the other side of the bridge that said, "Welcome to Destin, the largest watersports rental village in the world." I want you to be successful and make profit, but I also want to maintain the heritage of our community, and that is a working waterfront and fishing heritage. And when somebody's putting four pontoon boats in the slip that used to be a charter boat, that doesn't bother me too much. But then when I see six slips, and eight slips, and ten slips, and young, legacy, young guys, the twenty-nine-years-old that want to buy a charter boat, that have been in the fishing business since they're fourteen, fifteen years old, they can't get in it because there's no place for their boat. So we're trying to find some type of middle ground to where the, the heritage and the fishing fleet maintains itself, the, the legacy livery vessel guys like Mike who've been here forever. Our kids played Little League together. We coached Little League together, for that matter, uh, that they can remain in business. And, and you just try to find that balance.
Now, I can appreciate that.
And it's very difficult when you feel like you're being targeted, but it's kind of like the short-term rental people felt the same way. But there were issues in the industry that had to be dealt with for the quality of life for everyone. And that's what's going on here. Whether you like that or agree with me or not, that's my concern. I don't get to vote, but that's my concern when it comes to, uh, the livery vessel moratorium. We were doing a capacity study. We want to do it in the interest of save. And, and, and when it comes to being targeted, um, there's some merit to those claims. Because the city, and the council, and the, in the, you know, you read social media, the people, it finally gets to a point, it's like, when is enough enough? And so we have a moratorium to where we can try to work through that. And if it needs a couple more, you know, workshops with the livery vessel folks to, to fix the permitting process and to make your annual, uh, haulouts and haul-ins, you know, we had some issues with, with boats being in parking lots and stuff like that. I think the city's really tried to work with the livery vessel companies, just, it's the speed of government. And trust me, I know, because I've been in fishery management for the last sixteen years. It's the speed of government and the speed of business does not line up. But I just want you to take, when you come up here talking about you feel like we're targeting, there is another factor, and that's the heritage of our community, and that's important to me. And I just wanted to share that with you and go on the public record where I stand.
No, I know. I'm sure I know where you stand. I appreciate that. I very much appreciate that. But we were talking about congestion on the harbor. We have to look at everything, not just pontoon boats.
I just want to let you guys that we, we care about your business, and we want you to be successful here. And we're not trying to put anybody in this room out of business. We're just trying to find that middle ground to where we could do it in a safe, sustainable manner that's good for everyone, for our heritage, for your business. We want you to be profitable. That working waterfront is important to the harbor. And when they talk about this moratorium's never done anywhere else in, in the state, Destin Harbor, I don't know if any of y'all travel around, this place is a special, special place. And it's different than all other areas of Florida.
I believe that, too. That's why I'm here.
So, that's, that, so, I'm off my soapbox.
But, but once we, but once we started out, it was fifty dollars, seventy-five dollars, now it's a hundred dollars. Who knows, next year it might be two hundred dollars for pontoons. And then the application fee, once again. It's a one-page renewal. It's ridiculous not to have that. And, and that's one thing I'd like you guys to really focus on. One-page renewal to take care of it, and, and they said they were going to take care of that for us, and they didn't, they didn't move on just at one point. for us, and they didn't, they didn't move on just at one point. And that's what frustrates me completely. Thank you.
Um, I actually have a question for staff. Do we have any sort of percentages in terms of the rate of increase in the number of livery vessels versus charter boats, for instance, as a comparison?
I don't know of any, ma'am.
But it's a significant difference, I would guess. Just offhand?
I, I know in our federally permitted charter fleet, we've increased six boats in the last four years.
Yeah. Okay.
Because they work for me. I work for them, actually.
Thanks.
All right, so anyways, good discussion, guys, and, and especially in a workshop format, we'll be able to have a lot more interaction. Go ahead, Mike.
I just had one, one suggestion for the council.
Here, Mike, you got to come up and give it to us.
Come on up, to be on the public record, sir.
I just had one suggestion for the council is, since nobody's going to be filing permit applications in November and December, because the city doesn't start taking them until January 1st, as of right now, right? So if you don't expand it to November and December, no application can be filed before January the 1st. That gives two months to be able to get, to get a workshop, and I realize Mr. Zinguzzi said January or February. Why not do something in November or December when all of us go there? No new boats can come in, nobody can get new boats because we're under the, because we're, nobody's going to be filing for new applications because the city's not accepting applications. So nobody's going to be able to add boats, nobody's going to be able to add extra boats, and we have two months to do a workshop and try to figure all this out and work it all out for everybody's benefit.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Well, I'll, I'll go into discussion after you close public comment. I, I don't want to step on anybody else's...
Well, let's go ahead and do that. Anyone else that would like to come up and talk? Come on up, ma'am.
I come to these meetings, and I, I don't have a dog in this fight, but I want to reiterate, and I think everybody bringing up the charter boat fleet kind of aggravates me, and I'm going to tell you why. Being a, a part of the fishing family, I don't think that these people understand the oversight that the charter boats have. We have Coast Guard inspections, we have outrageous insurance. To complain about a fire extinguisher that one did a couple months ago was ridiculous. I own a fleet of ice cream trucks, and every one of them have a fire extinguisher on it. I don't have a dog in the fight, but it does aggravate me to compare with charter boats. And I'll tell you why. They're suffering because of their oversight. They pay big money to do business in this town, and to complain about the money and to bring the charter boats into this argument was aggravating to me. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Any further public comments before I close the public comment period? Seeing none? James, none?
No, sir.
No comments? I see a hand being raised. You almost missed your opportunity. Name and address. You need the red buttons on, go ahead.
Freddie Ortega, 200 Country Club Road, Chalamar. My question is, how long does it typically take to get delivery permits? Once you fill out the application? Like, when you turn everything in?
Oh, I mean, there's a follow-up. A lot of times, people will give partial applications. Maybe the question is, from once staff says you've got a complete application, what's the turnaround time?
Yeah, so I've been going on three years on pending and have not received delivery permit.
Did you apply before the moratorium went into effect?
Yep, two weeks, two weeks before the moratorium.
Okay.
Going on three years pending.
Yeah, we've had the moratorium. He said he filed before the moratorium.
Two weeks, two weeks before.
So I guess that's, we'll have to look into that.
Have you followed up to make sure they have the application?
I got, I got an attorney, but there's no answer. I tried to call the city, and I have no answer from nobody, so it's just up in the air.
Well, we'll get you an answer.
You just contact Joey at, what...
I'll talk to him right after this.
Talk to him after the meeting, please. All right?
And another thing, moving a business to another location, is that allowed? Pontoons business under the moratorium, is that allowed?
As long as you're within the city of Destin, I don't think it matters where you, if you move from one dock to another with your, as long as you meet code with your parking and stuff like that, that's not a part of this ordinance, correct?
If you have specifics, and you're, you've got legal counsel on your questions, I mean, that's what we've got the staff and our council for, so we can get that going on specific ones.
We can't answer that here because we don't know all the details.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. I, I try to get ahold of somebody from the city, and I can't, so...
That's guy right there. Talk to him tonight.
Okay, will do.
All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Going once, going twice. Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing portion of the meeting, and Mr. Destin, you want to make a motion? In a second, and then we'll have discussion.
Yeah, I mean, these are, these are good folks, and we are trying to find the balance. You guys have been here for a long time, longer than me, some of you guys, and we are trying to find the balance, so that we can preserve our, our legacy heritage, but also allow you guys to be profitable without jeopardizing, you know, safety. So, again, I don't think the public discussion really is enhanced by arguing which sector has it worse. I have to go through more regulations than these guys. I just, you know, in defense of, of these folks, I know that we are committed to trying to solve some of the, the issues that were brought up by Mr. Stevens last time. I know that we've got issues on, questions on transferability. Please, we have open communications, and if you have specific questions to your business on transferability, I guarantee you our staff is going to be ready to try to answer those issues and, and solve some of them. So, I do see this as a work in progress. Again, nothing happens quickly with the speed of government versus the speed of business. I think the mayor was right in that regard, but I do support them. I'm going to support the moratorium extension tonight, but I'm also going to put a tag on it that we're going to instruct staff to bring us a couple dates last week of, excuse me, that would be Thanksgiving, so I would suggest the first two weeks of December, bring them back to us, and we will select one of them so that you guys have enough lead time so that we can bring you guys to the table, because I know there's a lot more to discuss with regards to renewals and, and the like. So I'm going to go ahead and make the motion on first reading to adopt ordinance 2033 CN, providing for a 12-month extension of ordinance 1930 CN, and instruct staff to advertise it for a second.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Mayor.
I got a second. Ms. Marler, you're first up.
Okay. The safety issue was brought up a little while ago. I have the unique job that I am on the harbor every day, and I just happen to be on the property that's right at the harbor entrance. I cannot tell you the times I've seen violations like you would not believe. And it's not the, it's not the, the rental company's fault. It is the fault of the people that you can't fix stupid. All the, all the delivery vessel businesses all require their employee, the people that are renting to watch a safety video. Some of those safety videos are probably a little out of date, they need to be updated. I will say that much. But the minute they get on that boat and leave the dock, it's like, eh, I couldn't care less about the rules they set. I'm going to go my own way. I've seen pontoon boats loaded to the gills with the, with the bow almost in the water because they got too many people in the front and not enough people in the back. Jet skis, they, they, they don't read the signs, so we have that. Then you have the, you have the harbor, you have the, the charter fleet, some going out, some coming in. Most of your charter fleet has been doing this for years. They can't see some of those boats because of the size of, the size of the charter fleets. We have a congestion problem at the entrance to the harbor and also in the pass itself. And God forbid, we won't go there, well, I'll go there, what happens at Crab Island? And that seems to be the biggest thing that everybody wants to rent a jet ski or a pontoon boat for is to go to Crab Island. The safety issue is not just the, the jet skis and pontoon boats, and we have the, we have the kayaks, we have the, we have the yellow boards, we have everything out there. But the, the main issue again is, you can show them the video all day long, and as soon, like I said, as soon as they get out there, it's like, boom, they couldn't care less. And if your, if, if your staff doesn't see them, they don't know. I don't know, there was a picture on the, on the, on Facebook, on one of the, one of the, one of the things. This guy, the, the pontoon boat was definitely a rental pontoon boat, and I don't know what company it was, but the guy was outside the rail on the bow, taking a picture from the inside, to, to, to the inside of the boat, fixing to go under the bridge. All I could see was a wave knocking that guy over under the boat, DOA because he got chewed up by the prop. The safety issue is, is definitely a problem, but it's, it's not just, you know, the rental people's problem, it's everybody's problem. I think we, we need to go, like I said, you can't fix stupid, you got people that won't, won't listen. As far as the private vessels, it was brought up about the private vessels. How do we regulate the private vessels? I have a, I have a pontoon boat, but I'm very careful about where I go, and I don't go to Crab Island. The main issues that I see are all set, all the safety issues in the world don't do any good until that first person gets hit or killed in, in the water. We've had that already. And God forbid, we just, we had something, something happen on land, you know, a couple of weeks ago that was just as devastating. We're easy to operate on that, that assumption without operating on the assumption that all the people that rent the boats are smart enough to know the rules and regulations. I mean, some of them just barely have a driver's license, and then we, we put them on a boat. I guess what I'm trying to say is, there has to be something that we can do as a whole instead of arguing like we are about it. There's only so many boats that can go in the harbor. You know, maybe that's why we, but we're the only city that, that does it right now that's on, on the water, is because we have a major congestion problem. We have just a small, tiny entrance and exit to the harbor because of Noriega Point and the way that the, the pass is situated and how the, how the larger boats have to dogleg toward the bridge and then dogleg back. Education is one of those things, and that's why I said I think maybe it would be those of you that are in the rental business, if you would check into your, say, you know, maybe we need to add to your safety videos and, and, you know, make, make these people sign it in blood, I guess, that, you know, that they're going to follow the rules, because they don't, once they get past, you pass your dock and they go somewhere else. Something was brought up about the, the, all the boats, the charter fleet. I believe the charter fleet is under a separate ordinance on how they're operating, and that's basically because when the city was founded and we started this, we started doing something with the charter fleet, we didn't have the situation that we have today with the pontoon boats. Again, if you go with private vessels, there are some people that don't need to be on, don't need on a boat. I mean, that, that's, that's all there is to it, are on a, on a jet ski. But what do we do about that? There's not much. I am sorry that this is going to be the last meeting that I'll be able to be at, that I can make a decision tonight, because there's still so much more that could be addressed and done. But as I said, I have watched, because of my unique position at where I work, I'm right there at the entrance to the harbor. I've seen near collisions, I've seen people who flat out don't, don't follow the rules. I mean, I've even seen people with half their, half their motor raised up because they don't understand how they're supposed to drop, drop it down in the water all the way, and sooner or later, somebody else is going to get killed in the harbor. I will, I will, I will be this way. I will be at those workshops, even though I'm not on council, because I will be at those workshops, because I want to see, I want to see everybody win. You know, and the next, the next meeting, you're going to have four new people up here who might have a difference of opinion than what we have today. So, I mean, that's basically all I can say is that I, I, I don't see trying to restrict you guys from doing your job or, you know, making a living, but I do see the point that we have to, for the time being, eliminate so much congestion that, you know, we, we're going to have that first accident. And I, I, I look at it from this point of view of, we should, we've, we've had a problem, we've had the problem in the last few years of the council and the city, the council and the staff not working with the public as well as they should. I think that's changing as we go. We've got new staff members that are really trying to, to do the things that they're supposed to do right. We've got this council that's seated right now has tried to do the right thing in the last, you know, well, my years that I've been on this council, and I hope and pray that the, the next four people that come up here, along with the three that are still behind, will look toward the, the goals of trying to make this city better and for the locals and for the people that rent, rent, rent the pontoon boats or sell them for rental. And I, that's about all I can say right now.
Thank you, Ms. Marler. Appreciate those comments. Mr. Braden?
Thank you, Mayor. This question for staff. If we don't have the moratorium in place, is it a true statement that the city's not receiving any more applications for livery vessels? If the moratorium is not in place?
Are you asking if it expired, or are you asking...
No. If, if there's not a moratorium in place, can a new, anybody come up and submit application to the city at any point in time for livery vessel license?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. I think, not seeing any further comment, we have a motion, we have a second. Let's go ahead and vote. Eyes have it. Still moved. We're going to take a five-minute break, and then we'll get on to consent agenda and our last comments and our last public comment period. last comments and our last public comment period.
Mike, I think you did a great job with the new vest. I can't wait to get mine, okay? And, and whatnot. And I just, you know, I think putting it out there on the website about other streets that are available and things like that is a very positive thing because like everything else, this is one of the programs that needs a little boosting and I think you've done a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Menchel. Any further comment? Go ahead, Ms. Ramsell, uh, Dr. Ramsell.
Yeah, kudos in putting this together and I love the adopt a spot idea. Oh, sorry, I'm looking at the wrong person. So, yeah, very well done. Thank you for doing this and I look forward to seeing it reinvigorated.
All righty then. Anyone else? Seeing none, let's go ahead and take a vote. For consent agenda, we have a motion to approve and a second.
It's up on the screen.
Oh. Buttigieg and MSO moved. All righty, moving into item seven. I think we took care of your one issue, Mr. Braden, but you have the floor.
Uh, the only thing I was going to add has been sad that we're losing this guy and the, the four people that are leaving. It's been a pleasure working with you. The other than that, I think that's all I got right now, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Ramswell, you have a pretty good list here, so take it away.
Okay, thank you. Well, it appears there was some overlap with the city manager and then I see Mr. Menchel has some similar items too, so.
Well, you can steal his thunder then.
So, the first thing I have on here is Noriega Point property line review and that was the direction to look at that northern line for the, the differences there. Could y'all give an update to everyone on the status of that? And then I think also that western border, the one on the pass with the 10-foot and 30-foot buffer or 10-foot and 50-foot buffers that were supposed to be there for right-of-way as part of the seawall project?
Let me, let me speak to the, the shared boundary line there. There's been a survey that has been ordered. We can overlay that with existing surveys and see if there is going to potentially be an issue there. Once we get that survey, of course, we'll have a better idea of that. I did actually talk to FDP's general counsel, Chad Stevens, today. He assured me that FDP was also looking at the matter and that they would share any information they had with the city and he just asked that the city share any information that we had with him. So, we agreed, once we have gathered all of our information, we would get back together. He assured me that there was no threat to our NERDA funding or any sort of federal funding at this time.
Okay, great. All right, I guess I'll leave that at that for now and move on. I'm going to actually switch to six. Or actually, no, I'll go Noriega Point survey first. And I see today we got one right before the meeting and then Ray provided us a printout of that survey. And I'm glad to see things moving forward, but it appears that this one, it's got all the right stuff on here in terms of highlighting different things, but it's not utilizing the deeds. So, if y'all can address that.
Yeah, and this is just a preliminary survey. I understand that Mike has been in contact with the surveyor. This is, he understands that he needs to use the correct deeds, the 2010 and the 1998, and he will do that and that will be what is presented on the final survey.
Okay, then I will leave that. I know Mr. Menchel has hit on this and we've all talked about this, so I'm not going to harp on it, but six months, we're now at six months and I know everyone's way aware of that, but yeah, that's troubling. The, now I'm going to skip down to Noriega Point project status update. Can y'all give me an idea of where we are in terms of the plans and everything with that, with this phase three?
Phase three, to my understanding, is going to be taking place sometime after first of the year. DEP has informed us that that's their timetable, but we don't have any definitive dates yet. But we do know that it's anticipated to happen probably sometime in January, you know, for the project to go out to bid, but they'll be bringing plans to us first before that happens.
And where are we with the plans? Like what percentage is the latest ones that you guys have?
Uh, I haven't reviewed those, so I can't speak to that.
I thought when we had that presentation, that was a 90% plan he was giving us, wasn't it? When we got that presentation, oh gosh, it must've been August.
Yeah, I remember 90 and are, are we still at 90? Is that all that y'all have gotten?
I'm not aware of anything newer than that, but that might be what they're bringing to us before we actually go out to bid with it.
Usually, just like at the Cross Town Connector, they gave us the 90, but then they'll bring us the 100 before they go to the RFP, is what I'm assuming. But I think his timeline back then was November to start phase three and now we're getting word that it's January.
Well, because the reason I ask is periodically I go through the DEP website and look at all the documentation and they actually have 95% plans filed with the DEP. And I'm wondering why there are 95% plans filed with the DEP that none of us have seen.
Lisa, are you, are you online available to answer that question, please?
Maybe it was 95% plan they showed us. I can't remember. Was it 90? That's what I thought.
These plans were actually completed and received by the DEP on September 8th.
Um, this is Lisa. The last that I have heard from Pierce is the plans are going to our building department and so at that time, I believe that was at 90%. So, I haven't seen or heard of anything past the 90%.
Well, I'd be happy to send this document that's on file, already filed and approved with the DEP for the 95%. It's concerning because of course they've got the wrong property line on here that's not in accordance with the deed, which is what I've been harping on us to try to look at and get done before we started doing this. And so now finding 95%, God knows when we're going to be at 100 and that line's not squared away. So, I'll send that to staff.
Is that the 2009 deed or 2010 deed that you're talking about, the lines?
Well, all the deeds for the point show that northern boundary is certain thing except a quiet claim that was done.
Okay. I'm just wondering because they did the NERDA application based on the 2009 deed, so if that's in error, what you're saying, then that's a big concern.
Well, the plans are in error, so I don't know which deed they utilized, but the plans are in error.
Can we find out what deed they used?
We will. We'll, I'll check with, with DEP tomorrow.
It does make a big difference, right?
Because it's about 30 feet and right there along the border, we've got that maintenance pathway and everything that could be situated 30 feet differently. So, 30 feet.
Can you, um, it, yes, if you will leave that, Mr. Pierce Barrett is meeting with me tomorrow. He's coming in from Tallahassee and so that could be something I could bring up to him.
Perfect. I'll be happy to send that to staff and Ray for distribution to council this evening. But again, I mean, I know we went through this with Heritage Park that, you know, suddenly we find out, oop, the plans are at what? We didn't know that. Last we had was 60 or whatever it was. And it's disturbing to find things on file that none of us apparently know about. So, we need to be apprised of that, meaning we, including staff, we need to know what's going on with this. Clearly, we're not. So, I, I look forward to getting this remedied. Next thing on here, and this is all sort of related. I've got communications issues and completion of council-directed tasks and, you know, I've, we've, we've beat a dead horse for a horrible expression about the survey, but there has been a sort of a pattern of things getting delayed and then we're having to go, what happened to this? And I know everyone's been very busy, but the other issue I'm coming across is I'm asking a staff member something and they don't have an answer and then I talk to another staff member, they have an answer, but they're not aware. I feel like there's some communication issues going on in terms of information that's being given to council. I don't know if that extends to the public, but I, I'm not sure what's going on, but I feel like there's some gaps going on and not everybody is on the same page. And it's very frustrating, especially in terms of, again, the survey when, well, what do you think of this? Well, I don't know. I didn't know anything about that. I wasn't consulted. Okay, well, why wasn't this person consulted when they oversee that depart? So, and again, this Lance, that's your purview. You manage staff and so maybe you can find out what's going on, but it's not an isolated incident. And so it's, it's bothersome when we're trying to find things or find conclusions to issues and no one seems to be on the same page. And I'm going to leave it at that for now. Let's see, we talked about the Kelly and Main Street signage, so I won't go into that. I'm glad to see that's moving forward and anxious to get those other signs up tomorrow and then look at that study once it comes in as well. But I believe that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Dr. Ramswell. Mr. Marler. Oh, I forgot.
Do you want to go down the normal?
Yeah, I got to go down the list. I'm sorry. Mr. Menchel.
My first item under the archaeological dig and part of this has been resolved with the fire department, but as you all recall, at the last council meeting, we got some information from a citizen.
Mr. Menchel, can you hang on? Can somebody pot up his microphone? Because it's very difficult to hear him.
How about now? Okay. Turn your mic off. Okay. We had, if you can't hear me, I'll, sorry, yeah, okay. We had that archaeological information presented to us by a citizen and there was a lot of information and there were a bunch of questions asked at, at the last council meeting and they were just kind of left up in the air. We didn't get any answers. And one of the statements that concerned me was the information was provided. I don't know if it's true or not, but, but allegedly with these artifacts that were found there, we are not permitted to build on there. Have we verified that information?
Um, I'm sorry, I can't see you, but, um, yes, I, I tasked staff with looking into all the records that were given to us at the last council meeting and we are allowed to, to replace the items that are in that park. So, our renovation project should not be impacted by this. However, there will be a full archaeological survey completed before we break ground on our renovation because that's part, it's federally funded too. So, the initial survey that was done was only related to the seawall area because, and there was going to be digging there. And that's why they, they did a survey of that specific area. The $750,000, give or take, restoration program that we hope to get started soon, that's pretty much the whole part. But there, there won't be a lot of, it's primarily restoration of what's there. So, they will do some, they will go in, they will do the digs, actual surveys, specific areas to see if they find anything, just like they did on the previous. But it, it, I'm not saying absolutely, but it... But I'm not saying absolutely, but it most likely will not impact our ability to complete that project.
Just out of curiosity, though, in your opinion right now, or you may know this by fact, would the fire department have been allowed to build their department, their building, based on what we know now? Had they gone through with the application?
It's hard to say. The survey that will be completed, like I said, they're actually, they will dig plot areas, so sample areas in the park to see if anything comes up, and it would depend on the outcome of those areas as to whether or not something could be built there.
Okay, thank you. As Dr. Ramswell said, we have a bunch of duplication. It's interesting that we seem to always have some of the same things. I truly believe she must have taken a tranquilizer, because I believe, I thought she'd be on the warpath tonight after seeing some of the stuff that we got this afternoon. First of all, Lance or Mike, whoever can answer this, in regarding the survey that we got today, when was the tasking submitted on this lat, on this recent, the survey we got today, the partial? When did that tasking go out? What day?
I believe it's Wednesday.
Wednesday. Who's answering that?
I did.
Okay, okay. Let's just go through, this is so disturbing, it's not even funny, and it's an extremely, extremely troubling issue. This has been going on for six months. Six months we've been asking for this survey. We've wasted all kind of money because it's been tasked repeatedly, and here we are again. So let's just go, let's just, first of all, there's nothing new in the survey we got tonight. We got a red hand or a cloud drawn around, nothing that was tasked by the city. So what are they drawing around when that didn't accomplish anything? That's not what we asked for. But let's go for the public benefit. Let's see what's happened in the last month, just on this survey. A month ago, we had a council meeting here where we were again questioning why the survey was being botched, okay? And after that survey, I'm sorry, after that meeting, Michael Burgess met with Dr. Ramswell, and they discussed that, and from what we were told, they came to an understanding of what needed to be done. So that's a month ago, and you would figure after that conversation, everybody would have been clear on this. Well, what did we have done? They sent out, Michael produced a survey that he finger-drew some information in that totally was not representative of what Dr. Ramswell had discussed according to the information we had. So that's two weeks, a month ago. Let's go back to the last council meeting. We discussed this yet again. What's the delay? Why can't you do it? I asked four times, over and over and over, are we clear on what we're asking for? Nothing has changed on what we've asked for since May the 4th, and yet it constantly keeps getting botched. That's not accidental, that's intentional. Now let's go to what happened last week, okay? After the council meeting two weeks ago, when, again, I asked repeatedly, are you clear on what needs to be done? And everybody said yes, over and over and over. This past week, I'm involved in countless conversations and conference calls with our lawyers and with Michael Burgess, trying to figure out, what is it you want? And at one point during that conversation, I said, Michael, look at the original tasking from May 4th. And he went into the action agenda, and he read it, and he says, oh, you're right. We asked for the 30-foot. Nothing has changed since day one on May 4th, other than we wasting time and spending money and not getting what we want. We had the conference call, and after that conference call was agreed upon, now we understand, we are clear on what is needed. At 2:45, the same day, on Tuesday, after that conference call, I sent an email, so that way this would be another clarification on what we wanted. And I specifically said, as a follow-up to our conference call, the survey should include the following in accordance with the dedication, the 2010 Norah Point deed and the 1998 Gulf Shore Drive City of Destin deed. And that was affirmed, okay? And even after all of these conversations and six weeks and counting, it still hasn't been done right. This is, it's beyond words, okay? I'd like to know, can somebody explain why we can't get this done right? We've sat in these meetings, you all have said, I understand. We've had conversations, we've spent lawyer money having conference calls to try to work this out, to no avail. It's not that hard. Why are you all not, and the other thing to point out, this was unanimously approved by the city council. That's a direct order to our employees. We shouldn't have to debate whether or not you do it or not. You all were told to do it, and you still haven't done it. Is this kind of, is this kind of action agreeable with everybody? City manager, is this okay with you? For this performance?
Are you asking me that question?
Yes.
Well, no, it wouldn't be okay if I felt that that was all accurate.
Okay, so tell me what's not accurate. Let's go over it, because we're going to get to the root of this tonight. What's not accurate about what I've said? Because I have every document I have, I've just spoke to, I can back up everything I've said. So what's not accurate?
I'm not prepared to go down that road tonight. I can tell you that I believe that staff coordinated with Dr. Ramswell on multiple occasions and believe that they did reach an understanding, and if that's incorrect, then I apologize. But I do believe that staff made that attempt, and I, my understanding was that both parties were in agreement. So I can look back into it, but that's not the information that I received.
Steve, I got a question for you. I'm looking at this document that Michael sent out today at 3:11:25 PM, and it talks about some of the things you were asking for, and is there something in this document, this deed, that doesn't answer your question? I'm a little bit confused. It looks to me like, you know, when you hire a surveyor, you kind of, at that point, you're turning it over to the surveyor to produce the document and get it back to you. Isn't that what we have here? Isn't that what was handed to us here at this plate? Is, I think, I think it says the red cloud surrounds is the accreted and evolved sand, the line weights and types have been updated as requested, the area of accreted and evolved sand's been so designated as requested, the 30-foot extension that you were talking about from the 2020 Mean High Waterline is provided for the entire area as requested. I mean, what's missing?
Using the correct deed.
Well, and which one is the correct deed?
Deed I just described, and a deed that...
You said two.
Yes.
You said 1999 and 2009, or 2010.
98 and 2010, which they've got, they're getting ready to complete.
Right, okay. And then, and so this whole time, there's been an issue between those two deeds, correct?
No, not at all. There's no issue with those deeds at all. Those deeds are on the books, and this...
Right, right, right.
You asked a question, I'm going to give you an answer.
Sure, sure. I'm not being argumentative, I'm just a little bit curious.
Believe me, I am certain.
What rabbit hole you're going down here when you're throwing out an accusation at our city manager? Because it looks to me like the staff's been trying to do what you geared for them to do. I think the legal team, are those deeds, are those deeds, is there any ambiguity or conflict between those deeds? I know the 2010 deed was used for the actual federal application to the grant to build the Regal Point.
So the survey has evolved over time. Part of the direction right now is to have the survey indicate the 2010 deed and the 1998 deed and plotted accordingly, and that has been ordered by staff. Staff did order that. It is coming. This is a preliminary draft of a survey. It's not a final draft. I think, hopefully, Mr. Burgess, he noted that. That was addressed.
I mean, are we going to be, should we be throwing rocks at Michael, or should we be throwing rocks at Baskerville? Who did this? Baskerville and Donovan for not getting that information back?
There's nobody to throw rocks at right now. This is a preliminary draft.
That's what I thought. Continue, sir.
Continuing on, I'm not making any accusation. I'm stating facts. Number one, this deed and dedication, there's no issues with this deed and dedication. The city manager, a week or so, came out with his opinion and ruling after the title search was done, which, that's one of my other items. And basically, those two deeds, these are my words, not a legal word, the deed and the dedication are in force, and they have not been superseded by anything. That deed and that dedication stands, period, okay? We want to walk around it and act like we don't want to talk about it. It's amazing, we've had two parts of this survey done correctly, but when it gets to this third piece, nobody wants to address it properly. It hadn't been, there's no question, we haven't asked for anything different than on the first and the second, but here we are, six months later, we got a preliminary deed, a preliminary report today, that by their own admission, oh, we're going to change it because it's not right. Then why give it to us? They're going to update it with the correct information that we asked for. So I'll move on, but again, this has been six months, and there's absolutely no reason it should have taken this long.
And I'll address why the preliminary deed was necessary. The preliminary deed, or the preliminary survey was necessary because it takes a lot longer to plot the specific GIS coordinates than it does to actually get a preliminary draft in the manner that the surveyor presented to us. I believe the surveyor just wanted to make sure that everybody was on the same page this time, given the past confusion.
They call that cross the Ts and dotting Is, correct?
That's correct.
It takes time, too, doesn't it?
It takes a lot of time. There's a whole profession for it.
It doesn't take six months, but let's just move on.
Well, Steve, that's a matter of opinion. That's outside, that's outside the realm. I know.
But remember, the first two that came in did go around.
I know, and I sense his frustration, but I'm just, and maybe I'm just trying to stand in the gap between the staff and Councilman Manchul, but, you know, hell, we had, half our staff had COVID-19 during some of those months. And, you know, maybe there is no excuse, or there is frustration, Steve, I appreciate that. Being from the background you are and myself, you know, it's like, everything runs downhill, and it gets frustrating, but that's not, you know, I just, I just, it really bothers me that you're throwing out, you're throwing rocks over here at the staff when it seems to me like they've been accomplishing the task, just maybe not in the timeline or timeframe that you deem appropriate. And so I'm going to defend them in that, in light of COVID-19 and all the other things that are taking place. So that's just my two cents. Continue, sir, you do have the floor.
Actually, I mean, I see both points, and the thing that I go back to is at the very beginning of all this, when it was tasked with Ms. Firth, and I remember questioning why it wouldn't have included and gone to our land use attorney, who would be a specialist in that area. And she didn't even know anything about it, I don't believe, for quite some time. So just the whole, and I'm not holding anything against Ms. Firth, she hasn't done one of these before. So again, we're working with folks that it just, they did a great job, but that's not what I would have expected. Who would have been tasked with it with the experience? So I see what Steve's saying for sure.
Good point, Dr. Ramswell. I just, I apologize. Steve, it's your floor.
Okay, let's just move on. There's a lot to cover. Under the deed and dedication, title search, okay? I asked staff if they could put together an action plan on how they intend to enforce the deed and deal with the encroachments on our property, and I'd like to see what they have to say about that.
I'll address that. There's four items that staff has put together. The survey has been ordered. We'll receive that. We'll compare it to existing surveys. We're going to check and see if there's any title policy, and if so, whether there might be a potential claim. Lance and I have the meeting with the county on Wednesday, and I had a conversation with FDPE's general counsel today. We agreed to exchange information, and once we have obtained all the information, we'll exchange it, and we'll have a meeting with FDPE.
Very good. And as I said to you in an email, you're now going to them, when you talk about the dedication and the mandated roadway, you're going to them with knowledge now, not with a question. And obviously, for new council members, we need to follow up on that and find out when we're going to have the county put in the mandated road and deal with the maintenance that they're required to do based on the dedication. Okay.
All right.
Mary, can I ask a question of staff and possibly Mr. Manchul?
Sure.
On, was any consideration taken to the fact that most of that property got washed out in 1998 during Hurricane George? Which included city property and included the private property that's in question?
I don't think that's being addressed at this point.
Okay, because a lot of that was gone due to the breach of Hurricane George.
But then it was re-nourished, and they placed geotubes in the barge.
That is correct.
So they rebuilt it, and those property lines now are, after that point, re-existed.
That's what I was trying to find out.
Okay. Let me start off, I'd like to start off asking each and every one of the citizens in Destin who are possibly watching on TV, or we certainly don't have that many people here left, but if you haven't voted, please take the time to go to the polls tomorrow and vote. I want to be the first to congratulate the four candidates who will be voted in office tomorrow and wish you all the best. I want to clear up some misinformation that was brought to my attention in reference to me not running again for this seat. My wife and I are building outside the City of Destin, and although we will not be moving for a while, I was not going to run knowing I would be leaving. If I had run and was fortunate enough to have won and then left, it would have cost the citizens of Destin due to the fact having to conduct a special election to replace me, and simply put, I will not do that. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve the citizens of Destin, and even though some would love me to go away, I can assure you, I'll be sitting out there continuing to help Destin to finish many of the issues that I have not yet completed. As I present this information, it is my sincere hope that a new council will pay attention to this information I am providing and work to resolve the issues I will be discussing. If any of you have any question, you can contact me, and don't hesitate to contact me 24/7. I want to take a minute to highlight some of the points I made at the last council meeting in Part 1 of my recap. I made the following statements. The purpose of any investigation is to prove or disprove an investigation, I'm sorry. The purpose of any investigation is to prove or disprove an allegation. Just because a person is under investigation does not make them guilty of anything. In reference to the sins of the past, no council member presently sitting here, nor most of the staff, can be held accountable for their sins of the past. But what each and every one of us should be held accountable for and judged by is how we resolve problems once they are brought to our attention. Sadly, many times this was not done, and the only thing that was done was turn a blind's eye to the problem. In addition, stating that taking action will give the city a black eye does nothing but bury the sins and fails to correct the problems. The City of Destin falls short in some basic government practices and procedures, and needs to work with the Florida League of Cities or any other source that can provide a checklist or go-by to help the city move forward. I discussed having knowledge that the City of Destin continuous service contracts had issues and identifying that city paid for services that they did not receive. It took the city manager nine months to correct those problems. The big picture was clearly lost by some staff on this issue, and that it does not matter if it was five cents or $500,000. The fact is the failure of the process and procedures. I want to call everybody's attention to a positive outcome regarding our contracts. With the process and procedures improvements put into place by Ms. Crystal Strickland and Michael Burgess, these types of overpayment errors should not take place in the future. This is a prime example of cleaning up a sin of the past to ensure that it won't happen again, and we don't have a black eye. I also mentioned numerous issues that I discuss, numerous issues that I discuss at council meetings are not gotcha statements, but are made as a result of closed-door meetings and emails with the city manager that resulted in little to no performance issue improvements. The point cannot be stressed enough, everything that is discussed in this presentation, with one exception, has been previously covered by me with the city manager in private meetings and emails. So again, this is not a gotcha. As I previously stated, you have any questions regarding this presentation, please contact me, and I will be more than happy to provide you the corroborating data that supports the information contained in this review. I provided a list of the most significant accomplishments that had been achieved this year, and want to, once again, thank staff for all the hard work each of you have done in a year unlike many of us have ever lived in during our lifetime. With that said, even with all the positives that have taken place this year, sadly, we do have some negatives that we cannot turn a blind's eye and must be addressed. In the Navy, a ship's captain can be sound asleep in the middle of the night, and if his ship has a collision with another ship, you can be, you can bet he'll be removed from duty. Being in charge, you have to take the good with the bad, which also translates to being held accountable, and failure to do so leads to consequences. In my opinion, if the city councils do a better job managing, the results will be more productive employees, and they will not be faced with having to face any kind of termination situation of employees. In the last meeting, I spoke about how I was left with no choice but to publicly discuss our city manager's performance issues. For those of you that are not aware of why I was put in that position, let me quickly provide those facts. Based on my observations of continued performance issues with the city manager, I attempted to privately document those issues in a council report form to be placed in a city manager's file. Due to... file, due to no improvements in performance issues that I had previously discussed with him. My attempts to do so were stopped by our city attorney and labor attorney, who informed me that any performance issues I had with the city manager had to be done in public city council meetings. Not being happy with that and knowing that council members should be allowed to meet and counsel one of our employees, I made a motion at a council meeting that would have allowed any council member to document an issue to be placed in a file, but sadly, my motion was defeated by my fellow council members. Based on that, I am left with no alternative but provide this information publicly. As council members, we all make motions from time to time, not all the motions we bring forward get approved. What is curious to me is most of our motions that are made that were not supported and passed by my fellow council members all have to do with accountability and cleaning up the sins of the past. It is curious to me why my fellow council members have such a hard time with this. So, to each of my fellow council members, in all due respect, I have to ask this question. When presented with facts of ongoing employee problems that council has direct authority over and that should be addressed, at what point do you do the right thing and what will the public think of each of you if you don't? I have numerous issues to discuss in this report, so let's move on. As I review this information, as a boss, I want to, as a boss, think of yourselves as a boss, and I want you to think about these questions. How would you handle an employee after repeated attempts to correct performance issues failed to improve? How would you handle an employee who does not perform in accordance with their job description and contract? How would you handle an employee that fails to respond to your emails and when they do respond, tell you they will try and get back to you? Resolution 1927 dated November 4th, 2019, Section D-06, titled Text Messaging and Other Electronic Communications states in part, "In addition to designated city staff, each city council member and the mayor shall be issued a cellular mobile phone owned or leased by the city." At this point, I'd like to ask my fellow council members, have each of you been issued a cell phone? Yes or no?
I have.
I haven't.
I have.
I've been issued, I've been issued one, yeah.
So, we have people that didn't?
Yeah, was offered to come get one, and I never went to City Hall to get it.
Okay, so we're now 11 months since this resolution was passed, and my question is, why weren't all these cell phones issued? 11 months. To allow these phones to sit in some desk drawer and pay monthly bills on a phone that was not even issued is a waste of taxpayer money, and there is no way to justify not issuing these phones.
Steve? Steve, it's Parker. Steve, I love you to death, my brother, I really, really do, but I know what I think you're trying to do. So, if you've got a motion, you ought to make a motion, but if you know it, we're on the eve of the greatest presidential election this country's ever faced, we've got this entire room filled with equipment, and we've got poll workers and folks that work for the supervisor's offices that are waiting for us to wrap this up. Steve, we talked about this at the last meeting, and I'm not telling you you can't talk about it this time, but in the deference to all the things that we got to do, we got to, we got to figure this out, man, so what do you want to do?
I'm going to continue with my presentation.
Well, if you're going to keep me here all night, Steve, I'm going to make a motion to end this portion of the agenda, and we'll see if we've got the votes to move on. Steve, you've got to, you don't sit up here by yourself. So, pal, let's figure this out, man. What do you want to do?
When I get through with my presentation, then we'll figure out what we're going to do, but until I provide the information, you don't know what you're voting on, if there was even going to be a vote. Okay, so if you allow me to finish, then you can do what you want to do. If you all want to shut me down, that'll speak volumes, suit yourself, but I intend to move on.
Well, then let's move on, pal. Let's hear it, what you got, man?
More importantly, by not issuing the phones, we failed to comply with Resolution 1927. Section G of the city manager contract-
The phones were issued, Steve.
If you didn't pick one up-
Yeah, but they were issued.
That's a different story. Does Preble Ramswell have a phone sitting in an office that she could pick up? He's nodding yes, so then, if you want it, go get it.
Matt said he was going to bring it to a meeting, and it didn't happen, and it just kept going.
Okay, so then, then the conspiracy that they've been deliberately hiding phones from us is not accurate. We have phones, if we go and choose to pick them up, we've chosen that or not chosen that in our individual capacities, but they've provided them and they're available. So, next point.
No one said they were deliberately hiding from them, but again, they were supposed to be issued.
They were. I got my phone months ago. I don't use it, but I got it. I got it right after we approved the ordinance that-
I don't know if it matters.
For public records.
I don't, I never wanted a phone.
But it's something that was so crucial that we had to have, that the city had to buy for all the council, why was it not, why did the staff not bring them to the next council meeting and hand them out to everybody and let you sign for them?
I think, I think we were instructed to go by City Hall and pick up our phones. It's on the public record, I'm sure.
No, we weren't instructed because at the time-
Oh, no, I disagree.
Okay, well, Lance-
So, now we're getting, because, all I'm hearing is opinion of one council member here. If you want to make a motion, if you want to get rid of our city manager for malfeasance or what, or lack of doing his job, which we just went through a long list of successes the city had, Webb gave a presentation, if that's your jest, we don't, you don't have to air it all out, make a motion and, and we know how you feel about our city manager, make a motion, see if you get a second, and we'll vote on it. Unless you find an enjoyment on your last day sitting up here at the dais to wear out Lance, our city manager, who was hired by you and the rest of this council. It's your choice. If you want to air out the dirty laundry, have at it, pal. It's a good way to send, send, send yourself off as a council member.
I guess I'm looking at this in a different way. This is his last meeting, and I was looking at this as he's trying to get across the concerns he has, so those coming in are aware of the concerns he has.
And that's fine, but I'm going to address the fact that if there's, the implications drip from the phone thing. The phones are available, the best arguments anybody has that doesn't have is, well, they didn't bring it to the meeting, that's, they told us, come get them, they're there.
Parker, in all honesty, I don't remember what happened, but I wasn't told to come get one, or maybe I was at some point and then COVID hit and nobody was in the office, whatever happened, but-
And that's, and that's fine.
Then it was going to be brought to a meeting.
But at some, at some point, we've hit, we've hit it, they've made them available to us, and we can go pick them up if you don't have them, if you really want to use them, but they can't force us to use the phones. So, what's the next point?
I had a question, Mayor, wouldn't, where does it say in the charter anywhere that the council can dictate what another council member can talk about, good or bad, when it's their time to speak? When it's their time to speak, they can talk about whatever they want to talk about, whether it hair lips everybody or not.
Well, no, he can have at it, that's what I said. I did say he could talk.
I'm just wondering, it sounds like we're trying to put a stop to a council member trying to say something, because we don't like what he's trying, what he's saying.
What I'm trying to do is foster-
Does that mean every time I don't like something that somebody else is saying, I'm going to put a stop to it, because I don't like what they're saying?
Rodney, it's a valid point. I'm not trying to censor Steve. I'm trying to get Steve to understand, I would like for this to move amicably forward, because I did sit through 50 minutes of this at the previous meeting, and if there's new stuff, the first 20 minutes of his speech recapped the stuff that we talked about last time, and now we're talking about the phone stuff, and I'm just getting frustrated because we've got to move on.
Well, now we spent 10 minutes talking about the phone stuff, so-
Well, and again, back to Steve, please, let's move forward so we can all keep the business of this body moving forward.
You have the floor, Mr. Menchel.
Hey, I'll yield, y'all can talk as long as you want, because I'm going to finish my presentation, okay?
I gave you the floor, Mr. Menchel. Have at it.
Yes, I am, okay? In regards to the cell phone, the issue here, okay, I'm going to ask our city attorney one question. Did you not come up and say to us, and you specifically said it in an email, that before the city could issue the cell phones, you had to do a public, a presentation to us, teaching us how to use the phone when it comes to sunshine and public information? Is that correct?
No.
No? You didn't say that?
No.
Okay, there was not going to be a class that you were waiting to give us to, okay?
Absolutely not.
Okay, no problem. Well, let's move on, okay? Let's see how much bark we get from this, okay? Regarding complaints, as we all know, each of us, including the city manager, have received several complaints from Mr. Gene Early on a variety of issues. I have had various conversations and emails with the city manager and our attorney in relation to a specific complaint filed by Mr. Early. At one point, the city manager asked the attorneys if he was to take action on a complaint, who should he refer the matter to, and when the information was provided to him, he still refused to act. During one conversation, I mentioned to the city manager that if it was his responsibility to handle citizens' complaints in accordance with his contract, and if he did not want to meet with Mr. Early alone, he could meet with or call Mr. Early accompanied by another staff member. The city manager stated he felt threatened by Mr. Early, and I told him if that was the case, he should notify the sheriff's office. On September 28th, 2020, Ms. Wendy Johnson, lead investigator with the Florida Board of Professional Engineers, sent an email to the council and the city manager asking specifically whether the city is investigating a complaint, and if so, the status is said complaint. A check of the responses back from the city to Ms. Anderson revealed that she only received two, from Dr. Ramswell and myself, and nothing from the city manager. In addition, numerous direct emails from me to the city manager on the subject have gone unanswered. At our last council meeting, I discussed this issue and requested the city manager directly respond and answer Ms. Anderson's inquiry. On 10/29/2020, the city manager responded to Ms. Anderson, but failed to personally answer the question. The city manager's response merely provided minutes of a July 20th city council meeting and failed to answer the direct question that the city manager was asked to respond to by Ms. Anderson. Based on the city manager's failure to directly respond, Ms. Anderson has not been provided the correct information to assist in her investigation, in particular, that the complaint was not in reference to a property line dispute. It is important to note, in the minutes the city manager provided as an attachment to this email, Ms. Anderson, nothing was stated regarding a property line dispute. Section 12 of the city manager's contract specifically states that the city manager shall investigate any such criticism, complaints, and suggestions, and shall report back to the council member within a reasonable period of time, not to exceed one month. The city manager is in direct violation of Section 12 of his contract, of item 13 of his job description, for refusing to handle a complaint he received.
I wrote that contract, and I would disagree with that assessment.
I'd like to interject something just for the record. Mr. Early does not live in the city of Destin, Mr. Early does not have any property in the city of Destin, so in my personal opinion, Mr. Early holds no standing in the city of Destin.
If you all noticed, I said a city council member and a citizen, okay? It's amazing how we have citizens come up here and talk all the time that live here, and we listen to them, but in this particular case, we wanted to, we want to, but any rate, we'll move on. As a result of my review of the continuing services contracts, not only did I find the city overpaid for services not received, I also identified critical inspections that had not been completed. I identified these issues based on a comprehensive review of three years of invoices and work orders supplied to me by the city. With that information, I prepared a chart which illustrated three years of work that had and had not been performed by the vendor. This is just a sample of the chart. Be glad to show it to anybody. It is important to note that some of the work that had not been done in these areas are potentially required by state law. In December 2019, I met with the city manager and deputy city manager and presented the chart that I created and discussed all of the issues and requested that they take immediate actions to correct the situation. It should be noted that neither the city manager nor the deputy city manager took any notes, took any photos of the chart, and as I departed the meeting with the chart, did not ask me to provide them any data contained in the chart. As a result, none of the necessary inspections were completed at the time. Again, a failure on management's part. Moving on. Talk about a troubling pattern, okay? Due to time, I'm only listing a partial list of city manager's performance deficiencies tonight, but when reviewing the material to perform this report, I identified an interesting and troubling pattern. Again, as we already spoke, on May 4th, 2020, council unanimously voted and instructed staff to have a submerged land lease completed in Noriega Point. I did not have the time to discuss the volumes of emails, conference calls, and city council meeting discussion surrounding the submerged land lease. From the beginning, it is clear that the proper management oversight was not provided. This task has taken six months and counting and still has not been completed. We first see that the submerged land lease is stalled and not completed for one excuse after another. We discussed earlier how this, we'd also discussed the failure of the city manager to handle a complaint from a citizen and a council member. The city manager, city land use attorney, and council member traveled out of town to meet with a representative from DEP, and- Which council member, sir? Pardon? Yeah, I'm not, I didn't name a council member. Okay, and again, I'm not saying anything negative. I'm just, okay? I named you, but if you let me finish, I'm not saying anything that you did wrong. The city manager, city land use attorney, and council member traveled out of town to meet with a representative from DEP, and upon return, I asked for a trip report or a trip recap, the city manager would not provide the information to me. The land use attorney did respond with both her and the city attorney's combined response. In addition, I asked the city manager numerous times to document his telephone conversation with DEP, with a DEP employee who stated to him that the reason the doc was being requested was at the request of Mr. Gidry. Due to the refusal of the city manager to document that conversation, I sent him a straightforward email stating those facts and asked him to acknowledge, which at that point he did. And finally, we all know the issues we have had trying to get the city to enforce the 1961 dedication to include the mandated Okaloosa County install and maintain roadway and whatnot, and in fairness, there is a meeting, the city attorney already discussed on that. So, let me ask each of you, do you see a pattern with any of this? I won't have the time to completely map it out right now, but one clue in this case, if you haven't figured it out, all of these examples have to do with one place and one place only, and that is Noriega Point, and the failures and refusal of staff to address various issues involving Noriega Point. Let's talk about attention given to tasks by staff that are fast track and are slow rolled. On April 8th, 2020, at 6:24 PM, Bryce Jarvis sent an email to Mayor Jarvis noting that the Wom County had updated their property damage language to the disaster docs and requested that Destin do the same. At 7:11 PM, Mayor Jarvis sent an email to the city manager, city attorney, and land use attorney, asking them to act on this. At 8:05 PM, the city attorney responded back to the mayor and advised he would get right on it. The city attorney also told the mayor, please remember, do not use your private email address for city business. The language is added on the, and presented under 4B on the April 20th council meeting. For the record, I have absolutely no issue with the wording being added to the document, but this illustrates via immediate after-hours emails and action, how staff fast-track something as opposed to how they don't. The second example is how fast-tracked an action after special counsel workshop took place regarding the abeyments at Noriega Point. Within days after the workshop, the issue was added to an agenda, again, an issue staff wanted fast-tracked. Now, let's contrast that with some of the issues I've already highlighted tonight. Nine months to act on continuing services contracts, six months and counting to provide the submerged land lease, 11 months to issue a cell phone, failure to respond to emails during duty hours versus immediately responding to emails even after hours. To specifically illustrate that point, the mayor sends an email after hours to the city attorney that results in lines of response, and I just the other day sent an email to the city attorney that required a yes or no and waited for-
You sent that on Friday afternoon. My office closes at noon, and I responded to you first thing this morning.
And I was going to, and if you let me finish, I was going to say just that, okay? That was my next sentence. To the new council, it's each up, it's up to each and every one of you to take the necessary action to ensure accountability and consequences of the staff that you have direct authority over, specifically the city manager, the city attorney, and the land use attorney. Far too many times, council members have provided information at council meetings that have been ridiculed and totally dismissed. It should be noted, most of the time, the information that was presented were official documents and did not, were official documents and not some information put together by a city council member. One of the best examples- One of the best examples of that is how many times did Dr. Ramswell discuss the crosstown connector and the glut of official documents that clearly stated and depicted a four-lane roadway and not a two-lane roadway, only to have this information denied and the staff attempting to change the narrative. When I first came on the council, I reviewed a massive amount of historical information regarding the crosstown connector project. I provided the information at numerous council meetings only to have the information to be dismissed. To sum it up, to have the witness staff frequently dismissing the information provided by council members and flip the narrative when valid documents are presented to corroborate the information should not be tolerated. Countless times, I've discussed with the city manager the need for him to be more responsible emails he receives from council members as well as the public. This discussion typically ended with the city manager noting that he gets buried in emails and he does the best he can do. I discussed with him that he should consider assigning one of his staff as his email surrogates to help review his email traffic. I can tell you that it's a common practice in most, in many businesses and organizations. In my last assignment as the Assistant Special Agent in Charge of Homeland Security in Houston, I was the Special Agent in Charge of Surrogate and reviewed and prioritized his emails, and the same operation could work for the city manager, and I strongly suggest he consider When I started this, and there was assumptions made that I was going to be making motions and whatnot, that's not my, that's not what I planned on doing. But I wanted to tell you all, sadly, I said this at the last council meeting, I didn't want to bring up any of this. I wanted to document this in a closed-door meeting with the city manager. I provided you with some information showing you some of the deficiencies that I, that again, in my opinion, in some, and things that I can prove in others, that he's weakened. And I strongly, strongly urge the upcoming, coming on city council to look into that. Anybody in employment has the duty and responsibility to privately counsel their employees, and our employees are the city manager, the city attorney, and the city land use attorney. I would submit to you that not only this city council, but city councils in the past, if they had done a better job possibly managing their council, their city manager and whatnot, we may not have fired them. Because what typically happens, and everybody assumed I was going to do that tonight, and that's not what I'm going to do, but all of these things fester, and it gets under all the council, and then all of a sudden, they blow up and they make a motion to fire our city attorney. I don't want our city attorney to fail. When our city attorney succeeds, our city succeeds. But these performance issues, if Lance takes a long, hard look at them, he can't deny that some of these things are true. And I would just strongly urge to try to possibly do better in the future, and more importantly, I urge the ongoing city council members to look at this because something like this should not happen. I don't take any pride in this. I am very saddened that I went to this extreme, but this information has to be put out publicly, and it's my hope and prayer that the new city council takes action on some of these things. I'm going to finish up by saying, some of these things that we've talked about, the continuing service contracts, it's not about the money, and I talked about, that's a success story, and I really want you all to listen to that. When I talk about the sins of the past, it's not meant to hurt anybody. It's about problems that we all inherited, but let's all work together to fix them moving forward. When we identified, when I identified, the continuing service contracts, it wasn't anybody in this staff's fault, none of them were here. But it should not have taken nine months. Now, in my opinion, that's because it wasn't important to staff, in my opinion, okay? But something like that shouldn't take nine months. That's the kind of things I'm talking about. Council needs to get a better handle on that and ensure we don't kick the can down the road on items like that, and it'll help everybody move forward. I wish and hope all the best for the new council members that are going to be elected. I wish you nothing but good luck. I'm sure you all will dissect what I've said and debate and whatnot. This is, believe it or not, like Rodney said, Rodney mentioned this about the mayor, he doesn't have anything personal. I don't have anything against our city manager at all. I think he is a smart man, but I do believe, as I've already said, there's some weaknesses that need to be corrected, and I hope we all work on that, and I wish everybody all the best in the future. Mr. Overdier.
Mr. Mayor, I'm just, well, happy to be back here tonight. Actually, not, even though I'm physically not sitting up there on the dais, but at least I'm, I'm able to be here and see what goes on, and it's a lot more comfortable here than it is being at home during the council meetings. The other thing, I'm very sad to see that these four council members will be leaving, and this is their last council, council meeting. I've really enjoyed working with all of them over the last two years. We're losing a wealth of knowledge and a wealth of information, and I just, the one thing I am looking forward to, though, is that after the next city council meeting and after we swear in the new council members, I will at least be able to call these former council members and actually talk to them outside of the council meetings and ask their advice or their opinion on some of these things, and so I look forward to that. That's all I had this evening. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Marler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been an interesting eight-year ride this time. Previously served eight years before. I don't think I'll ever beat Parker's father, as far as as many times as he's been on council, but I'm the close second, I guess. It's been a pleasure, it's been a pleasure to serve up here with these fine council members tonight, or through the last four, four years of this second term and before that. And I thought about a lot of different things, but I plan on coming back and being a member of the public and come back. I've got some unfinished business I'd like to discuss with the new council once they get in, and I'll do that in a public forum in a later date. But we'll keep it short and sweet tonight, and I'm just glad I had the chance to be up here for another eight years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marler. Your service is greatly appreciated. What you can do with all that money. Mr. Destin.
Thanks, Mayor. No, I've, I echo the sentiments of Council Member Marler. It has been the privilege of my life to serve up here. It has been a privilege, absolute privilege, to work with staff and to the folks that have been on this dais with me through my entire four-year journey. I'm talking about Chatham, I'm talking about Kyron, I'm talking about you, Preble, I'm talking about you, Rodney. You know, we got a lot done, a lot of very important things, and I couldn't have gotten any of it done without your support, your understanding, and there have been times where we were on the opposite ends of issues and we never took it personally because we actually understood that, you know, you're not going to agree on 100% of everything. But you guys, I, I wouldn't have accomplished anything without your help, your assistance, your understanding, and your shared vision, and I'll, I'll love you to the end of time. You know, this is our home, and we fought like hell for it, and I know you guys are going to continue to do it. So my love to all of you, to staff, nothing but good things to say about you. And so I'm not going to be too far away, and if you ever need me, especially Skip, if you need to call me, give me a ring. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Congressman Destin.
Hey, Parker.
Mr. Morgan.
Who are you giving the Gulf Power undergrounding torch to?
Whichever one of you guys wants the miserable lot of trying to solve that Sphinx's riddle, I leave it to you guys. I would, I would say it would probably be some of the folks who are familiar with it, but you know, give anybody that's passionate about it because it is going, it has the potential to completely revolutionize this city. It has all the potential for making us a safer town, will have more reliable power, and it's an investment in our infrastructure to also be an investment in our economy. Because at the end of the day, when you have underground utilities, property values go up in residential areas because you're able to bring back tree canopy, you're able to bring back the aesthetics that you've lost because we're constantly in a battle of having our trees ripped back, landscaping ripped back, every street scape plan that we spend millions of dollars in. It's great until year 10, when the live oaks that we spent a fortune on and nurturing and keeping from dying gets too close to the power lines, and they come and hack them all down. So everything from aesthetics and being the charming place that, that we know exists, if you share that vision, I guarantee you, whoever ends up taking that torch, you're going to make an investment in our future that will pay dividends for generations. And you guys got to understand, you don't have to take your first offer. These guys make a lot of money selling power as the legal monopoly in our town, and damn it, we have the ability to say that they don't have to be there if we don't want to. And I think we have good community partners, and I'm not trying to kick them out, but we're not going to get nothing for the privilege, which is what a franchise is. That's the fancy Latin word of saying, you get the privilege to be the exclusive provider of this utility, and in exchange for that, you're going to get, you're going to give the citizens something. And what I believe that should be is getting our utilities undergrounded because that's the next generation's investment in the long-term perpetuity dividend yielding economic growth and vitality of this community, not for just the, not just for commercial folks, but for the, the quality of life and the aesthetics of everybody who's put down roots here and is going to be here and is going to die here. So whoever feels that passion and expresses it, you put them in charge. So, but we've got, we've got basically just the franchise agreement to nail down and the undergrounding, at which point, let's hit the ground running, guys, and I'll be more than happy to, to, to help shepherd this along because we've got a, we've got lots of folks at different pots of money at every different level of government that I think should be coughing up to help us put this underground. Everybody from tourism development to Triumph. And you're not going to run me out of want to, and like I said, I still live on Kelly Street, I'm still your neighbor, I'm still your friend, so if there's things I can do to help you, you just buzz me, and I'll be available.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Destin. Well said. Keep your phone available because we're going to be picking your brain throughout this process.
I'll tell you what I know, and I'll tell you if I, if I see some, some proverbial you-know-whats before you step in them, because I've probably already stepped in them. So this is a process, and if you guys stay strong and keep our interests at the forefront, we're going to be just, we're going to be fine.
Thanks, sir. Thanks, sir. Mr. Morgan.
Well, I promised Claude Perry I'd do this, and if y'all don't support it, I completely understand. But I would suggest that the future council take a serious look at it because back when, a couple of meetings ago, I had asked about the Episcopal Church wanting to use Marler Street Lot as they've grown for free on Sundays. I took a look at the Marler Street Lot revenues, and they were dismal, and you know, I think the city would stand to benefit more from having that lot for free than the $13,000 it makes annually, or decide to do something else with that property. So I would move that we waive all parking fees at Marler Street Parking Lot.
Motion?
That's a motion.
I have a motion.
I'll second it.
Free parking.
Every day or just Sundays?
Every day, yeah. It's just, it's, it's unused, and it's, it's one of the most prominent pieces of property the city owns and invests in, and I hate to see that property go unused.
We have a motion, we have a second. We'll open up for comments. Did you say 13,000 a year in revenues is all it's bringing?
What day did you say? I'm sorry.
No, free, free. The motion is for the Marler Parking Lot to be free 365, right? Seven days a week. Do you, any, for, any discussion? We have a motion, we have a second. Go ahead.
Y'all can table it to a future meeting, but I honestly think it deserves discussion.
Yeah, that, I would, let's wait rather than-
I promise you, we'll bring it up. We could double, cross our heart, promise.
If someone would bring it up, and I do hate bringing it up at 9:00 PM, but-
No.
I am constantly the last person to speak at these meetings, and generally, like tonight, the air has been completely sucked out of the room by the time it gets to me.
There's a little bit of oxygen, rough, not much.
Yeah, not much, but I'm going to use some of it because I've earned it, been up here the past four and a half years. I will say, I would like y'all to seriously consider it and take a look at the revenue and where that property is, and it would benefit the city more if it were actually being used, and it's not being used, being, having us charged for it. It'd be good for business, it'd be good for residents, and, and, and if we decide to go down the route of paid parking, it doesn't make sense financially.
About a fire station.
Ray, would you like to withdraw that motion, then?
Yeah, I'll withdraw that motion. I didn't get a second, but I would like-
We'll bring it back up. We promise.
Yeah, Ray, if you wouldn't mind, you can put it under my name or as a general item, whatever it works, but some point, maybe the first December meeting?
That'd be wonderful. It's a wonderful piece of property, and it should be used, and it's not being used now, and it doesn't benefit the Destin residents in, in lieu, in way of revenue, and it doesn't benefit Destin residents in terms of parking, it just sits there empty constantly, and our numbers reflect that. And so I would love to see the city address that, and that's one of the-
Could you get, put together an analysis of that cost, net benefit, you know, of some sort? And I think Dr. Ramswell said she'd like that under her, the agenda, under her agenda.
Or a general item, it doesn't matter, as long as it's on there.
Maybe a city manager report might be a good place for us to take it up.
We'll work together. First meeting in December, is that what you said?
Yes.
That would give the new council time to be at a meeting and start getting acclimated.
And I don't, I don't give speeches, but I'm going to try to give a little one tonight. I'm still not good at public speaking, and you would think after four and a half years of doing this job, I might improve on it a little bit, but I'm still waiting. So sat in this chair, and this is rough math, for about 472 hours, that's almost 20 days or 11 40-hour work weeks. I'm, yeah, Pierce County. I'm 33 years old. I was elected when I was 28, and since then, I've had two kids. It's funny, I'm in the service industry, and my job every day is to go into work and try to make every person I see happy. And, and this job, everything about this job runs contrary to that nature. If I'm lucky, on a good night, I make, might make 25% of this room happy. On most nights, I probably make nobody in this room happy. And so I have been incredibly uncomfortable for the past, yeah, the rooster, I made a couple of people happy. I made a lot of people confused, and I probably confused myself in the process. Yeah.
That may be happy.
Yeah, so the past four and a half years, I've been incredibly uncomfortable. And anyways, when I was running in 2016, we had a debate forum that was sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce, and I had taken a lot of money from a good customer of mine, named David Bobo. It was $3,000 checks from separate LLCs that he had, that they were, he was in the coal industry, and so I was getting coal checks, and so people were talking about me like I was supported by Big Coal, which was really weird. And hindsight, I shouldn't have taken the checks, but at the forum, they had asked about it, and yeah, I support Frank. And I think the mayor actually submitted the question to the moderator that night, so thanks for that, Gary. Anyways, I gave a really bad-
I did.
I gave a really bad answer, and I could feel the crowd kind of collectively cringe. And it was a well-attended forum, and my public speaking was worse than it is now, which is not great. And so I panicked, and I blurted out, "I love Destin, and I want to raise my family here, and my wife is pregnant." Well, my wife wasn't too happy about that because we actually hadn't announced the pregnancy yet. She was in the crowd, and she looked like she wanted to kill me. After my time was up, I was sitting next to Skip at that forum, between Skip and Steve Michelle, actually. And anyways, after I was done speaking, I looked at my phone, and my wife sent me a text message that said, "Well, I guess we can tell my mom now." On a more serious note, it's funny how everyone says it's too late to regulate development in Destin, which is what a large part of the past four years has been about. And I understand where that sentiment comes from. It comes from frustration and a lack of planning, and the sprawling irresponsible growth that the city of Destin faced for decades. And people would direct their anger at me, and being 30 years old, you know, I was 10 when most of this stuff was going on, and, you know, hardly my fault, but I did identify Rodney and Preble were on the council at the time, and Parker and I identified those were two good votes that kind of changed the direction of Destin, development in Destin. And so I decided to run for city council, Parker decided to run for city council, and for the first time in a long time, the city council had four pro-smart growth votes on this city council, and we made some big changes that I'm really proud of. on this city council and we made some big changes that I'm really proud of. But, people will say that it's too late to regulate development in Destin and I understand it, but they're wrong. And the reason why they're wrong is the next time you're driving into Destin from the Marler Bridge and you see the Emerald Grand on your right, you won't see a 12-story condominium on your left. And, and that's because of this council. When you turn on Main Street from 98, you won't see 500 apartment units on the old movie theater property. And that's because of this council. And I think that's a good thing. You won't see any more mini hotels in Crystal Beach or Holiday Isle that sleep 32 people and have two and a half parking spots. Those neighborhoods won't be degraded any further and that's because of this council. And with any luck, after tomorrow's vote, we won't ever see another building over six stories in the city again. And that's because of this council. Destin screwed up years ago in our planning and our development, but it's never too late to make a difference and this council made a big difference and I'm proud of that. We've accomplished some great things in the past four years. The public beaches, we've added new parks, we made some comp plan and LDC changes, we made changes to our short-term rental. We've got increased code enforcement, which was non-existent four years ago. Joey and his team are doing a fantastic job and I'm proud we're able to budget them the money for them to effectively do their jobs. We gutted a city staff that I feel lacked transparency and ethics and we replaced them with a city manager and assistant city manager and two city attorneys that I think have done a fine job at both of those. They have progressed our strategic priorities wonderfully and I thank all four of them for that. Lance was a natural pick for city manager for me because over the past four and a half years, when everything in Destin felt like it was falling apart and nothing was going right, which was often up here, through no fault of our own, it was the circumstances that we often found ourselves in. You could always count on our Parks Department to do a great job. In a town that has often suffered self-inflicted crisis of confidence in our city government, nobody could legitimately question the wonderful role our Parks play in our community. They're great today, they always have been, and I'm proud to have played a small role in shaping their future. Lance, you're doing a good job. You were handed, handed a dumpster fire of the situation and I think you've handled it well. And you've built a great staff around you. The best part, though, about promoting Lance as city manager was we were able to promote Lisa Firth the Parks Director, who to me personally, has always been one of the city's greatest assets. If everyone approached their job with enthusiasm Lisa Firth approaches hers, the world would be a better and far more positive place. Mr. Bailey, I don't think this gets said enough, but thank you. You've been an absolute professional the past four and a half years. In an organization that was constantly fluid, you're a constant force of stability and professionalism that the city often needed. There's a lot of things that we haven't accomplished that I wish we would have. I wish our streets were more pedestrian-friendly and that's a big one in light of what happened recently. I wish people drove slower on our roads and I wish we took the action to make that happen, whether it's lowering speed limits, increasing our budget to the sheriff's office and request that they enforce speeding on our back roads. Because as Destin has become overdeveloped, we have transferred that traffic under our residential streets. And while most cities do everything they can to make their streets slower, we've done everything we can to make our streets, residential streets flow faster to get traffic moved around. And I think we've sacrificed quality of life of our residents for convenience of motorists. I've shown a lot of disdain for this job over the years and that's, you know, that's a big fault of my own. But, I'd do it all again in a heartbeat because I'm proud of what we've accomplished. It was good and necessary work and I'm proud to have accomplished it with y'all despite any of our differences in opinion, personality, or policy. You know, Rodney, Preble, and Parker, we had a lot of 4-3 votes four years ago that were important votes in the city and we wouldn't be dealing with the issues today. You know, we had a lot of important votes, so I'm glad to have been a part of that consensus at the time. Skip, Kyron, I've enjoyed it. Mayor, you've done, we kind of started butting heads from a long time ago and I think you've done a fine job. So, thank you.
I wish you weren't leaving.
I was born and raised in Destin and I'm raising my family in Destin. I love this community, even at times when I'm frustrated with it. And this job, you're constantly dealing with the problems of, the problems of Destin and so you get a negative, you know, it can be a negative job at times. Check our email inbox, it's problems after problems after problems. And we're not the Chamber of Commerce. That's our job, is to solve and address the problems of Destin. But, it can be grating on you. But, I wish you all the best and will always support this community in any way possible. Good luck and thank you for having me and putting up with me the past four years. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks to all, all four city council members that are leaving. I've already been on my soapbox tonight. Kim, what do you have?
Nothing, thanks.
How about you, Kyle?
Just wanted to again echo the sentiments, thank the outgoing council members, particularly Chadam, Parker, Kyron. Took a chance on a 28-year-old city attorney about two years ago. Appreciate it.
This is the last part of public comment and we'll start on this side and I'll work that way, just opposite of normal. Go ahead.
Tracy A. Bear, 716 Main Street. I just want to thank the four of you for what you've done for our city over the last four years. I've been here for about eight years, these meetings, and I've watched some crazy council things not happening for the best of the city. And I commend y'all as a team that there's been some awesome things that have happened and if it hadn't been for this seated council and the agreement upon what you knew was best for everybody in this city, even though at the time, a lot of people didn't believe it was. So, kudos for your leadership and thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Come on up. Hold on just a second. Come on up. Same old just reminder, name, address for the public record, turn on the red light.
John Stevens, 425 Indian Trail. I guess our community over the weekend lost a beautiful young girl, so I just want everyone to be thinking about that family and our middle school is going back to school tomorrow. That's one thing. The other thing, Santa Claus is actually watching. He sent me a text. He was curious if the Christmas parade's on because he's trying to stuff his sack of
I think we just saw, Lisa, you want to address that? I thought I just saw a list of the time for the Christmas Boat Parade I know is still on, so what?
Yes, this is Lisa. We have talked about that again Monday. We are ready to go with it and I guess we're just kind of still trying to decide amongst all of the senior leaders if that's something we should be doing in our city and safely. I think we were going to wait until about the 16th and make that be our decision. Right now, we are, we have the FDOT and permit, so we're ready to pull the trigger if we decide to do that. So, we'll keep you posted.
Okay, I'll let them know.
Come on up, John. Hit the red button, well, it's already on, so just.
It's already on. John Green, 3792 Indian Trail. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your service, Morgan. Steve, thank you. And Morgan. Very good, thank you very much. I don't want to jump on any bandwagon and that is not my, I don't want anybody to think that. But, I want to tell you, I know the staff is short. I know that they have difficulty getting people here. I hope that they can get that fixed. Really don't want to talk about my credentials, I have good credentials. Last meeting, I came here and I made one, one request. Move the walkway to the other side. Move it north. I didn't hear any mention about painting over the street and moving. Now, I had a presentation that I was going to bring because I have some solutions, I talked to some DOT people, I drew it up, spent the weekend designing it. I don't have the surveys, but there are solutions to make the system work. Disappointed. No questions asked. What are the specifics? Who did you hire? Who did you go out and bid the work to? Or who do you have on staff that's a PE or PE's outsourced business? I worked for UPS for 22 years. When we hurt somebody, lose a finger, snapped their neck, you know what we did? We stopped the damn business. We stopped it. We took the whole staff of engineers, the managers, and we fixed the problem right then. We waited two weeks. I'm disappointed. Please, if you need me to come help, paint that damn street and move the sidewalk before the signs go up, call me. My name's public. My phone number's public. I don't know how they got it, but it's all over the damn place. But, call me. I'll paint it. But, don't put the signs up without painting stripes. Thank you.
Thank you, John, appreciate it, sir.
Harbor, Spring Lane. Is Lisa listening? Perhaps? Can we have Christmas decorations on 98 this year? If we need to create a committee, we need Christmas decorations, guys. We look like Bah Humbug, that's the first thing. Second thing, I want to say, thank you to this council. I want to tell the public a story that they may not know, but about 15 years ago, I'm not going to say any names, I was sitting on my front yard, sitting on my RV steps talking about what we could ever do to this community. People didn't realize that we were at the cusp of having 20-foot story buildings all the way down the harbor and everybody's, "Oh, there's no more land." Oh, yes, there is. If you take an aerial view, there was. This council took it to the level that 15 years ago, we actually sat and cried and said it was never going to happen. We were never going to get enough people and enough votes on this council to make some common sense developments. Thank you. This is the most historical council that Destin has ever had. You've accomplished something that we have tried for 20 years to accomplish. You should hang your hats on that. This town cannot thank you enough. One more thing, when you go and have this discussion about the free parking for these churches, I'll have you know that I love my church. However, they're making big money on this parking and it has been infringing on local businesses. Let's evaluate this. Let's not forget that we sat in here while the Episcopal Church is leasing to three different businesses, some aren't even legal. We need to address this situation. They make good money and I'm okay that the churches make money.
Those leases.
But, if you're sabot, let me finish, please. If you're sabotaging local businesses, we should not be catering to that situation.
Those leases are exempted on Sunday. I'll email them to you if you'd like.
They're still making the money and they're sabotaging businesses that are legit.
Not on Sunday. The leases are not in effect on Sundays.
Okay.
With Episcopal Church.
The leases aren't in effect on Sundays?
They're not in effect on Sundays.
I do business Monday through, Monday through Monday.
The lease agreement the Episcopal Church has with the pontoon operators that lease their parkings are not in effect on Sundays.
Okay, but I'm not, so am I confused? What does that, what does that matter? I don't, am I confused?
You were saying they're making money, the Episcopal Church.
Just for the Sunday. I got you.
Yeah, that's, we've just, I'm asking for the parking lot for free all the time because it's.
For one day?
No, every day. It's never used by anybody.
Now, I don't mind it. Would I mind? And I don't want anybody thinking I'm being a Scrooge or Bah Humbug. I mind the fact that the churches didn't work with us in leasing their parking to things like that Crab Island Shuttle that booted me off my government land there. And I talked to Father Parton about that. And I understand that they need to make the money and I'm all about it. I will do anything for them to make the money. But, they also have to understand, you can't sabotage legal businesses for illegal businesses and rent your land out and your parking out and then expect the city, me, to turn around and give them something for free after I've been complaining to them to stop or work with the city. If that makes any sense, and I'm sorry, I have agreeing with giving them, but like I said, we need to evaluate that. They need to do right by us. Don't ask me to give something while you're sabotaging me with illegal businesses. Ma'am.
Okay.
Okay. Hey, thanks to this town council. Thank you, everybody, for what you've done.
Carrie, hold on just a second. Mr. Burgess, we talked about some lights. Do you have a quick moment? Are we going to do that?
Yeah, I sure do. As you all probably saw in your project spreadsheet on Friday, we've received an FDOT permit to provide for holiday lighting on 98. And I've been working with Ms. Firth and the entire Parks crew for probably two months planning this project. So, if you leave tonight, just on a lark, and if you look over towards City Hall, we have an uplighted crepe myrtle. It's red today, but you can change the colors on it. The green looks excellent, but it's red tonight. So, just swing by, take a look at it and imagine 20 trees like that lit up that way. It's going to look really cool.
Just a start.
Thank you.
Hey, Kyron, we'll show up and do it. We can show up and do it, right?
Thanks, thank you so much. Go ahead, Marcy. I see you're poised. You're queued up.
Marcy Bell, 3 Gulf Breeze Court. I want to thank all of you for being here. I'm actually going to miss the four of you that are gone. You guys have done a great job at doing what the citizens have actually wanted to be done since I started in the Envision Destin meetings and saw what they all had to say on the boards. So, thank you, thank you, thank you, and thank you. The only other thing that I have to say to anyone who's watching, listening, incoming council members, remaining council members, the mayor, I really think you guys need to take into account the people who run this city that are not upper management. It's time that this city makes a choice to give these people a living wage. Not all of them are paid a living wage and we live in one of the most, well, we live in the most expensive area of this county. 10, 12, $13 an hour doesn't cut it and I don't care what job they're doing. We all need to take that into consideration and I hope you hear me loud and clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcy. Anyone else? Anyone else? Anyone else? Again, anyone, any comments, Ray? Nope. James? Nope. For our fellow four members that are leaving, thank you for your service, meeting adjourned.